Hey, are we ready to go?
Seven twenty-nine.
Hi, Adele.
Hi, everyone. How are you?
Good.
Good.
Hi, Adele.
Hello. It's seven thirty now, Steve, so if you want to begin.
Voting to Apple is now seven thirty.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Get the show on the road. Pursuant to the open public meetings law, this is to state for the record that adequate notice of this virtual meeting has been provided to the public by publication in the Union County Hall on December twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one, and by posting and filing of said notice in the office of the municipal clerk. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the board. And you have the advantage of taking, coming on Zoom or, or by phone, and that was, that's all described in the borough documents that can be found on the Borough website. With that being said, I would now like to have a moment of silence and a flag salute, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
Of the United States.
Of America.
And to the flag.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Invisible.
Liberty.
Liberty.
Thank you. Adele will poll, please.
Mayor Tedesco is excused. Ken Capobianco.
Here.
Councilwoman Salmon. Chair Greer.
Here.
Ms. Velagio.
Here.
Mr. Nearstead.
Here.
Mr. Tarantino.
Here.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Mr. Vena.
Here.
Mr. Barkin.
Here.
Mr. McCormick.
Here.
And Ms. Bianco is excused.
Okay.
For him.
So we have nine participants at this time. Voting members?
We have four of them. I believe our applications just require seven voting members.
With five affirmative, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, at this time, do I have a motion if everyone has an oppo, had, hadn't, has had an opportunity to view the minutes of the January twelfth Planning Board meeting? Do I hear a motion to accept those minutes?
Make a motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All of us in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Here, one motion carries. Let's proceed on to our application, or our applications in this case. Tonight, the first one we'll hear is the one thirteen to one fifteen Winslow Place. And that's case PB twenty-one dash zero-four. Is the applicant and/or his attorney present?
Would the applicant or attorney, please raise your hand on Zoom or drop a note in the chat, and I can promote you to a panelist so you can speak to the board.
It'll be Mr. Piper, P-Y-F-E-R.
Okay. Good evening. Yeah, I was, I was promoted to a panelist now, so I can speak to everyone. Good evening. Yes, Scott Piper, Piper Law Group, Cranford, New Jersey, representing the applicant, Caesar Españo.
Mr. Piper, I'm just gonna advise you, when you turn your head to the side, it's not really working, so you gotta face your microphone.
Okay, will do. Is this okay?
No.
All right, good. All right, this is an application, and we're gonna, I'm not sure if, as I spoke to Don a little earlier today, definitely we've got the architect, Francisco Melendez, we have the applicant, Mr. Españo, we have John McDonough or his associate Matt available for planning testimony. Our, our engineer, Mr. Fury, unfortunately, is having some health issues that arose yesterday and may not be able to participate. Don and I discussed basically as a housekeeping matter, you know, we're gonna proceed today with the witnesses that we have available, and if we don't have engineering testimony, we're gonna have to carry that to a future meeting, hopefully March, but that's, of course, at the board's discretion. So I just wanted to lay that out there.
Yes, that's correct. I discussed that, Mr. Chairman, with Mr. Piper. I've also advised him that, given that we have paper board on in March, that if the application does not conclude this evening, that I considered it rather unlikely that this Winslow Place application would continue in March, that I felt was more likely it would continue through April. But we can see how that goes. But I had suggested to Mr. Piper that, given that we have this evening's meeting here, we were already coming, that they should go as far as they can with their witnesses, and particularly given we're not gonna have space in March. So that is correct, Mr. Chairman.
I agree. That's, and that's, that's, yeah, that's exactly what's gonna, what's gonna require. We, we will have a lengthy meeting, I presume, on, at the next, our next meeting in March, so, yeah. May very well be carried into April.
Well, just for the record, we'll be ready. We have to go into March, we'll be ready with the engineer, depending on the board's wishes. If we don't, you know, if your hearing on the other matter takes all your time, no problem, but we'll be ready at your discretion.
Okay, that's fine. With that, would you like to, would you like to proceed to call your witnesses?
Yes, if I, if I, first, I just wanna give a little opening here, and as Don has given on one matter. This is an application to do two things. Number one, confirm that there is a prior non-conforming use of this structure as a three-unit residence.
Excuse me, Mr. Piper. We, as we had discussed at the last session, this is gonna be an application for a used variance. You have a court reporter, right?
Yes.
So I'm assuming that the court reporter is just somehow remote watching this on Zoom, but I think for the record, we should identify that the person is here so we can see him or her. All right, okay.
Hi, I'm finally on. Thank you.
All right, very good.
Fran, Francesca, Fran Devella. He's also gonna be your reporter for the next year, for the next application, too.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
If I, if I, if I may, if I can interrupt, Mr. Chairman, I'm having a hard time hearing Mr. Piper. If he can upgrade his microphone or speak closer to it, I'd appreciate that.
I would, I would agree. I'm having difficulty as well.
Thank you.
All right, it's part of my.
If everyone can mute their microphones.
Yeah, Paul's, Paul's right. If everybody mutes, it's gonna work better.
Thank you. Okay, so again, part one is really the prior non-conforming use of the building as a three unit. And the second aspect is that we're seeking approval of an expansion because of the application notes, the existing units are one-bedroom, one-bathroom units, and we're seeking approval for two-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bath units. And expansion, a little bit of the structure, not basically staying in the footprint and raising the height slightly and increasing the square footage based on, of each unit, based on the improvements to be constructed. That's just by way of, of introduction. On, I, I think the board should have also all the, the application with the supporting materials, one of which is a letter dated March twenty-eighth, two thousand one, from Judith Brown, the zoning official of the Borough of Garwood, writing a letter dated March twenty-eighth, two thousand one. And then the other being a collection of some construction permits and a violation notice. Those I obtained by submitting an Oprah request to the town, to the Borough Clerk. And I'm just wondering if those could be admitted because they were produced by the Borough. I received them, the applicant asked me to submit the request, that just whatever procedure you think is appropriate for that.
No, in response to that, Mr. Piper, I don't think that we need to concern ourselves with a lot of evidentiary niceties in terms of the foundation of the documents. I think as you wanna move each document into evidence, just indicate the providence of it, and I'll, and I'll rule on it. You know, I saw that letter from Judith Brown. I understand that letter. You tell me that that letter came from the Borough via an Oprah request. I accept that. I think that is an important document to your case, obviously. But let's just, rather than worry too much about preliminary niceties here, let's go through what your case is.
Okay, no problem. Is Mr. Melendez on, the architect? I'd like to call him.
Before we get to that, Steve, I like to, I understand the bulk variances, but on the use part of it, I, I don't, I, I'm not sure, I don't think this letter establishes that it is a non-conforming use. I don't, we don't know when this was built. And the statute, I looked at it again, and the statute says you gotta, the only time you can go to an administrative officer is within a year of the zone change. That would make it non-conforming, so we either have an expansion of a non-conforming use, or we have a used variance from the start. And the way I read Victor's report is, I think he's treating it, I don't mean to speak for him, he's here, of course, as a, as requiring a used variance. Now, even if it's a non-conforming use, you need approval for the expansion, but what are we starting with here? I don't think we should address that in the middle of the case. Let's get that set up.
Right, I mean, basically, we're gonna put in to evidence testimony about, about that issue. I mean, we have, everything we got from the Borough and all the evidence we have shows that this has been a three-unit building since it was constructed. We don't have any evidence showing that it was ever anything other than a three-unit building, so that's the basis on which we're gonna proceed. I'm not relying solely on that letter, but it's important.
Right. What kind of variance are you after? If you can't tell us when, the zoning, as I remember it from another case we had on Second Street, the zoning went into effect in the twenties. And that person was trying to expand from a single to a dub, to a two-family. And it's on the other side of the street, so it's in, not in the RV zone, so he, he needed that. And that's where, that's where you are. You're in the RV, where it allows two-family, but three families aren't allowed anywhere. I'm not trying to be difficult, but we ought to know what the relief is that's being sought here, that's all.
No, as I, as I indicated, because all the evidence shows, or will show, that it's never been anything, we don't have any evidence other than it being a three-unit building. There's no, as I said, so we're asking, we really need both. But I would proceed to say that we would submit to have it approved as a prior non-conforming use, and then move on to the expansion, but we, we obviously need both.
You can't rely, it's, it's not good enough to say that it was always a three-family house. Question is, when was it built? And was it permitted then? And my guess is.
We'll proceed with our case, but like I said, we don't, from submitting the Oprah request, we don't have any evidence showing any of that information, and.
Well, but, but respectfully, Mr. Piper, that, that's your burden as the applicant. The fir, the first question, and I appreciate Mr. Barkin's question intimately, but it's your case, but the first question, I guess, is, when was the house built and what was the zoning at that time? Why don't we start with that?
Right, well, again, that's, we're gonna we'll, we'll proceed on that. If I can proceed with the architect, we'll address those issues.
Well, if you, if you can't answer those questions, then there's a used variance required, to me.
Correct, yes, I understand.
Not an expansion of a non-conforming use, but a used variance for the whole thing.
I understand.
Okay.
I understand, and that'll be part, another, that'll be part of our engineering testimony as well, and we don't have.
All right, but, but, but before, before we go down the whole rabbit hole of doing all that, Mr. Piper, right, can we just get a proffer as part of your opening statement as to when the house was built and whether it was ever compliant?
I'm not sure when it was built, and like I said, all the evidence we have is that it was built as a three unit, so.
But if we, if we don't know when it was, if we don't know when it was built, and we don't know what the zoning was when it was built, then isn't Mr. Barkin correct that this is a, this is a straight used variance?
If that, right, if we don't have evidence through our engineer about that, which he may have, then yes, I agree, sure.
Wait a minute, you don't, but I mean, I don't mean to be disrespectful in any way, but you don't know whether your engineer is going to be able to testify as to this issue, and it's a maybe?
He will be able to testify, yeah.
Okay, and what, and what is the proffer? What, what is?
I don't know the, that's right, I don't know the answer to that right now.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Bill.
If I can add to what Steve is saying, if we are uncertain as to the legality of the existing use, and I know the planner, you know, almost ninety-nine percent of the time goes last, but I'm wondering, why are we getting into the architect? If we, shouldn't we be hearing from the planner as to his findings as to what the legal use is of this property?
We can do that. I mean, I, I, that's, basically, I was just going to proceed to the architect based on his visual inspection and to discuss some of the plans, because he's been there telling you what it looks like now and then what it's going to look like, to basically set a factual background, but.
All right, and I don't wanna upset your application. You proceed, obviously, as Mr. Fraser's saying, you proceed as you wish. I just, you know, when Don used the term going down the rabbit hole, it's like I just don't wanna go through all the, the architectural, if he's going over the history, rather than the proposal, I'm fine with that. I, it's almost like I don't wanna get into the whole proposal until we find out what we're working with to begin with.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so on that, Mr. Melendez, you, I see that you're on, if you can unmute. All right. Mr. Melendez, basically, would you state your name for the record to start?
Yeah. Francisco J. Melendez, Senior, from FJM Architects LLC.
All right, so we're gonna swear Mr. Melendez in. Mr. Melendez, please raise your hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Your witness, Mr. Piper.
Mr. Melendez, you're a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey.
Yes, I have been licensed in the state of New Jersey since nineteen ninety-one for thirty-one years.
And you have a practice of architecture in the state?
Yes, I have.
To submit, Mr. Melendez, as a current qualified to discuss the architectural plans.
Okay, so, Mr. Melendez, your testimony has previously been accepted by boards as an expert architect?
Yes, I have testified in front of Cranford, Board of Ed, Union, Westfield, Linden, Alissa, there's some, no work, and many.
And your architecture license is current, correct?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that Mr. Melendez be accepted as an expert in the field of architecture.
So be it.
Your witness, Mr. Piper.
Mr. Melendez, you prepared architectural plans for proposed renovations to the existing structure at one thirteen, one fifteen Winslow. Is that correct?
Yes, I did.
And as part of that, you've visited the site?
Yes, I have.
And were you able to make a determination of the approximate age of the building in connection with that?
I mean, I, if I were to guess, maybe.
Objection, Mr. Piper. We're not looking for a guess, Mr. Melendez. You're brought, you're brought, you're providing sworn testimony.
Right, I mean, I, I would, my, to the best of my ability, I think his words built in the fifties, nineteen fifties.
And when you, when you saw the building initially, what was your, what was the condition of it?
It was in a very bad disrepair. I mean, it, they had a lot of, you know, the storage, things all over the place. As a matter of fact, we had to go back and, and weigh until the space was clean in order for us to safely survey the property. You know, so but one thing I have to, and I, and I'm gonna testify, I mean, in my professional opinion, there are three units, this distinct three units separated, they all have different meters, different entry, different access from the front and the back. I have no doubt in my mind that this is a three, three units building.
Did you see, when you were there, any evidence of any work that would indicate there had been changes to the fundamental design and structure of the building at any time?
No, I mean, just to tell you the true, the way that the, the building is a structure, it was designed to be a three unit. I mean, you have, it's divided like pretty much in three bays, and the structure is suspending from the stereo to the left, to the middle, from the middle to the, to the next. So it, it was designed that way. It was designed to be a three, three-unit building.
And they're three units side by side?
Yes. They separated by, you know, the micing wall.
So there's a basement, a first floor, and a second floor?
Yes. They all have their own entries and everything, you know, front door, rear door, access stair to the basement. Normally, you would see one stair access to the basement, so, you know, they all have their own storage in the basements, they all have access to the, the attic. You know, so I a hundred percent sure that this has been, always been a, a three unit.
And there's, you said, I think there are separate utilities for each of the.
Yes, meters for separate, distinct, separate meters for each unit.
So there's separate water meters, electric meters?
Yes, absolutely.
Gas meter?
And they all have their own utilities. I mean, they don't share any utilities at all. They have their own water heater, their own furnace.
And you prepared proposed plans to renovate and slightly expand the structure, is that correct?
You know, one of, one of the things is, if you really look at the, this building doesn't belong in Garwood, to tell you the way, the way it is. And, and the proposed design really unifies the building to makes, makes it look like a one, one unit that is, but is still distinctly separated. We were able to, to achieve that, you know, to have, to give it a look of a, a single, very attractive, modern unit, and have the three different ways in and, you know, and keep the three separate. We lifted up the roof and we did a, the roof kind of unified right now, you know, the shape, if you look at the, the rendering that we did, the elevations, you know, we added dormers, we added materials that are really belongs to this neighborhood. It's a really, I mean, in my opinion, an enhancement to it. You know, I think the neighbors would be very happy to have this building in town.
Can you discuss what exterior improvements you have proposed?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if you want me to project my screen, if that's what people would like to see. I mean, I, I could describe it.
I think that would help if, if you can, sure.
Yeah, sure. The hosts have to allow me to.
So we're, we're asking the moderator, Dana, if you could please enable Mr. Menendez to do screen sharing?
Mr. Menendez, I made you a co-host.
Okay.
Will you let me know if you're able to do screen sharing?
Yes, I have. All right, what you're seeing, this is the first page, the title page. On the left, you have the, the survey of the property. And as you could see, in the back, there is a, a void that has a concrete pad. And in the architectural plan, we, we're filling in that void. And what we have done is we have rearranged the front and replace all the stairs to create a front porch. And each unit will have their own entry and their own stairs. When I get into the plans, I will show you, we, we kind of separated, we sown the screens to create privacy. We also added a rear deck with the stair that is also separated by a screen to keep each unit separated. And we also proposed to redo the driveway and add three parking spaces in the back. And all that is, you know, detail in the civil drawings. This was just the original. And we do have a, a little Sony charge over here, a Sony analysis that pretty much says what the, what is required, what is existing, and, I mean, we're no change in the lot. And we actually, I think in, if you could see in the architectural, it shows you the setbacks that we have on the front, on the side, on the back. Okay, and then let's go to, these are the existing. As you can see, the basement, what I was referring is that you have a stereo wall with a structural line of wall in here in the middle. This was an unfinished basement, and this is the other line with the stereo. Each unit has their own stair coming down to the basement. This, this layout had two doors communicating this, too, because I think there, there might be some utilities coming in the front. And there was a crawl space in the back where we put in the addition. The way the, the layouts, the existing, you come in and you had a living room, a bedroom, the stair going down, and the kitchen in the back. This, this, so the unit has a living room with a kitchen with the stair going to up and down. And the one on the left and the right are pretty much identical, like mirror image. The, the attic, the, the unit in the middle had a, a bedroom. The units in, in, on the side only had like a bathroom on the second floor with a little, like, attic closet. Then we go into the proposed layout, the proposed layout of the basements, we are proposing a, just a recreation room with a half a bathroom, a utility room, and the three units are completely separated, like original, where they have all the utilities in the back. The space that we put in the addition, we're not extending the basement, we're just continuing the crawl space. So as you could see from the original, we're really not expanding the footprint of the building besides adding that, that void that is in the back. And now the new layout is, you know, each unit has their own, front porch, it's an open layout with an open kitchen island in the middle. And then you have a bathroom with the door that takes you up to the deck on the back. And the three units are pretty much uniform right now, pretty much all worked out to be almost close to the same square footage, which I, you know, is roughly around fourteen hundred square feet, the new units. Now, the second floor, we were able to, by lifting up the roof, unifying the. Now, the second floor, we were able to, um, by lifting up the roof, unifying the, uh, one second, I got it. Uh, okay, so now you end up with, uh, two full bedrooms, one in the front, one in the back. You have a master bedroom in the front with a walk-in closet. They share a bathroom. The master bedroom doesn't have their own bathroom. And they have their own closet space. Now, the, the roof, we were able to do, you know, a hip, hip and dormers with a, yes, a central, uh, dormer in the middle that kind of unify. So the elevation kind of give you the look of one unit, but it's, uh, separated. You know, you have three different stairs going south to the porch with a cover, uh, gable on the front. We have dormers in the middle. We have a higher, uh, gable, uh, with brick. Uh, we have, uh, you know, uh, insulated, uh, double hung windows, vinyl, and we have cementitious, uh, board and brick and asphalt shingles. And, um, that's really the way it looks in the back though. And then there is, we have the two columns and there is a screen between the, separating the, the, the three porches. And in the back, we also have a screen separating the, the, uh, the, uh, you know, the deck on the back. And, um, that's in the nutshell, uh, a more, uh, at least an aesthetically building. I mean, it has a, the shape is more, more attractive than it was before. You know, so that's really the, uh, my presentation.
What's, uh, Mr. Melendez, as far as the building materials that are proposed on, on the exterior, you, what, what kind of siding? Just give us a little description on the siding and the roof.
Yeah, the, the, the siding, you know, like I said, we call it cementitious board, but what it is, is, uh, the siding is, is fiber cement board. It's what is called hotty board or, uh, nichiha. It's another product that is in the market, but the most well-known is, uh, the hotty board. It's a real durable material, but it's very attractive. All high-end house, uh, houses are built, uh, with that material. Uh, the fiberglass roof shingles would be the architectural profile that would give you a little bit more shadow and in, in terms of the shingles, uh, the way that lays in. And, you know, we did add those, uh, dormers that are, that are really just for trying to balance the, uh, the elevation.
And what's the existing, uh, structure? What's the exterior of it now?
It's just siding right now, vinyl siding, I believe. If I remember. Yeah, we're replacing all the window, uh, with insulated windows, yes. And everything, you know, the, uh, the, uh, everything that we have, we try to keep, uh, free of, uh, free maintenance, uh, it's vinyl composite wood, decking and post, so you don't have to be painted every year. That's really what is, uh, you know, all high-quality materials.
Oh, as far as, um, you have some lighting detail on the rear, I think?
Yeah, we are, you know, we, we have lighting on the, on the front, on, on the, on the surface. And in the back, we, we do have, uh, you know, what, uh, what it would give us the required, uh, egress, uh, type of, uh, we have, uh, little stereo light fixtures next to the doors that light up, light up the, uh, the deck area and the, uh, we meet the one foot handle for, for a stereo. And, you know, we didn't propose nothing on the, uh, on the parking because we don't wanna pollute, have lighting pollution to the neighbors with any poles or anything, but, you know, so they, they would all, they're so, so and so, a floodlight that it has on either side, that if somebody's on the backyard, it will let up. It has a, a motion sensor.
Okay, and now as far as landscaping, I, I don't see anything in particular on your plan. Um, but, uh, can you just talk about that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I know, uh, you know, with the civil drawings, uh, that, that do shows, uh, you know, some landscaping and, um, you know, I, um, let me see. I know we didn't actually, the architecture, the, and show it, but I think, uh, he does have some landscaping on the, on the plans.
Okay, um, all right, and obviously just, you know, Will, you, you can add some landscape detail on your plans.
Yeah, sure, that would have, one thing that I did mention that was the comments that we're collecting all the rainwater leaders. Uh, there is a perimeter piping that, that travels to, and to the back and then, and it goes to a, uh, either a dry well or the, or a underground system that the civil engineer showed, so we don't have any water, running water from, from the leaders to this, to either to the driveway or to the side of the house. Everything is all pipe on the ground, collecting the water. I know that was one of the comments of, that we.
And it'll lead to a drain, a drainage area in the rear yard.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, thank you, uh, you know, Don, do you have questions or the board?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Kathy, you go first.
Um, I wanna ask about the, uh, front yard setback. Um, right now it's seven and a half feet. Um, and you're proposing to leave it at seven and a half feet by putting the, uh, steps sideways.
Yes.
Is that what you're proposing to do?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, because if, if you look at it, I'm sorry, if you look at the originals, you were coming out.
Yeah, I know that.
That we're projecting beyond the property line, so we, we turn them around to make sure that we were within the property line.
All right. The reason why I'm asking is anyway, we can move this building a little bit back, probably not, but to make it, since it's a bigger building, um, that you're proposing. Um, the other thing, I wanna ask about the height. Um, what exists now? You have a peak.
Yeah, right.
Center. Right? So what you're proposing, uh, you're going above that peak that's presently there now?
Yeah.
Even though you have a second floor?
Yeah, actually.
Presently?
But what would, see, the, the previous, the previous bill, uh, the way the building was structured, you, you already had an attic. And the height of the existing building was twenty-four, and the proposal is going up to thirty-two.
Okay, where are you getting that thirty-two then? I mean, where, where you getting the extra six feet? Even though, uh, be, because you had another, uh, because it was a two-story, like you testified, there was two stories.
Well, yeah, the previous had a, it was like a half a story. And now we're completely raising it up. So, you know, we kept the, uh, slope of the roof a little shallow and, you know, so we're, you know, we, we, we kind of went, were able to, because you already had, if you, if you really notice, the existing already had a, in the middle, it had a, a, you know, a second floor that was to the height in the back also. And this, this was all attic, but it was, I think it slopes down to this side, slopes down to this way. And then when we lift it up, you know, we, we really balance out what, what, what we increase on the floor uh, in order to, to keep the, the height of the building, which is still lower than the thirty-five, right? I think.
Yeah, you're, yeah, you're still at thirty-two.
Yeah.
Um, but, but, but I'm asking is, where is that extra space coming from?
Well, it's because the roof was, the roof was lifted up completely. You know, it wasn't, we were moving the existing roof and we putting a whole new roof. And the, the new design allows us to, to have the height for the, uh, you know, the height on the second floor and without going that higher. I mean, we, we increased, uh, what do you call it, six feet? And normally you're a foot in order to build that second floor, right? So we, we, we made up because the existing had more, more attic. If you know what an attic that is no, an, a uniform height, you know, you, you, you're really higher on one end and then it gets really low that you, you even have to duck down or, you know, so, uh, that's how we were able to, to come out with the design that we did by redoing the roof. And, you know, the way we did, we didn't wanna put a flat roof, but.
Which is good.
Yeah, you know, because we still wanna drain it. You know, so we sloped to the front, to the back, and on the side you have a head, which is a different slope, and that's how we were able to accomplish what we have. And we have a, you know, the slope of the roof is not as peak as, uh, you know, you could see on the side, there is a continual ridge. You see a gable on the front and the, I mean, on, yeah, on the side, actually, that's the, we turn it around. You know, so we maximize the front, so it worked together with what we, with the design that we came out in the front with the two dormers and a, and a gable in the middle.
All right, is that front part the same height as the pitch in the roof at the?
Yes, yes.
Top of the roof?
Yeah, because you're looking at it from a lower angle, but, uh, when you look at the roof plan, it matches this ridge, matches this ridge.
Okay.
Okay, this, right.
And the other.
Right, mm-hmm.
And the other item I wanna ask, um, I'm sure Bill Nereso is gonna say the same thing. Um, um, you didn't give any testimony yet, and I'm assuming like you will at the next meeting with regard to to a, a tree in front. Um, would you be amenable to put a tree or maybe two trees, um, in the front?
Absolutely, the owner will have to confirm that.
And will you work with, uh, uh, with, uh, Victor, uh, of a Negra's, uh, landscape person?
Absolutely, we're willing to comply. I mean, yes.
Kathy, those are really, those are really owner questions, not architect questions.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, usually we get like a landscape architect sometimes, and that's why I'm asking. Okay, I'm done.
Mm-hmm.
All right, I, I have a couple. Okay, Kathy, you go first.
So I, I, I'm trying to understand the height issue. Because if there is right now a second floor in the center apartment that is usable, why does that have to be lifted up six more feet?
Well, i- i- if you look at the existing layout of the building, it doesn't, you know, it has a, I think it, it, it's like, almost like a flat roof in the middle, and then it has a sloping on either side. So you really have a higher roof in the middle of the building. Okay, so the reason we, we redid the, the roof is because we wanna give a better look to the building. And the, the massive and the aesthetic, you know, we were trying to make it look like this is one building, and you have three units. And, and that's really the, 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 the design that we were trying to deal with. If you look at the, the, the existing look, you really emphasize three different buildings put together. You know, because the middle is flat and the sides are sloping in a different way. This, this kind of, that's this roof you put a uniformly to the entire ma- massive of the building. And it made it more attractive.
I understand that, but it's all indicative of that middle portion not being there when the building was built in the first place. So, but I still don't understand if that's a usable second floor unit in the center, if that's a usable second story.
Mm-hmm.
Why it has to be made tall?
Well, we, we.
Why can't it just stay that way? Why can't the height remain the same?
We are, we're just putting a roof on the top, on, on, on the existing one. Let me see, hold on one second. Right here, this unit had a bedroom right here on the top. So we're really no increasing, we're just putting attic roof in, on top of it. That, that, we're really lifting up the two left side, you know, and a little bit more in the front. You know what I'm saying? So, um, but what you're saying is, we, we really need to increase the height in the middle of the building.
Wait a minute, but I think Mr., I think Mr. Capobianco's point, uh, Mr. Melendez is, or let me ask it this way. What is the height of this attic that you're building on top?
The height of the, you know, the attic, well, the attic is, uh, you know, I mean, we have a finished floor to finished floor eight feet. You have framing, that's more nine feet and, you know, so you have four plus eight plus eight, that's twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. You know, and we're going up to thirty-two.
No, no, but here's my question, and I think this is the point. The existing house, the second floor, what is the interior height of that room?
Okay, so the, the, the existing house, the attic, first of all, you couldn't walk in this area. This was.
No, no, in the middle, the room in the, one in the middle.
In the middle had a full height.
How, how high?
Right.
Seven feet, seven and a half feet, what is?
Yes, you know.
Seven and a half feet is required, right?
Seven, six, seven is six foot eight actually, could, you could be livable, but, you know, yeah, eight feet, yes.
No, but what, but what is it? What is the old one?
That's what I'm saying. The old one have a bedroom that has a, a livable bedroom on the second floor.
Okay, and what is the height of that bedroom?
Seven, six, eight feet?
Which is it? Seven, six or eight?
Eight feet.
I, I, I'm, I'm confused. The existing height of the old bedroom in the middle, is it seven and a half feet or is it eight feet?
Eight feet.
It's eight?
Yes.
And the, and the height of the second floor of the construction you're proposing is also eight feet, correct?
Yes, it is, yes.
All right, then, on top of the second floor, you're putting an attic, right?
Yeah.
What is the height of the attic?
The attic, it will be like, I don't know, six feet by the time we get all the, the details into it. It's not, it's not a livable space. You can't have a, a livable space on the attic. It's always structural.
But, uh, it's a legitimate question, Mr. Melendez. What is the height of the attic that you're building?
Right, absolutely. So I telling you six feet.
Well, you said it was like six fifty feet. It, it, have you actually, is there an actual design standard as to how high it really is?
Well, it depends on the slope of the roof that we're providing.
Well, with the slope of the roof that you are designing, what will the height of the attic be?
Six feet.
Okay, it's gonna be exactly six feet, not more.
No more than that. It would not become a livable space. You don't have access to the.
I'm not asking about livable space, I'm asking about the height.
Okay, six feet.
All right. Now, if you could go to the front elevation, I have a question.
Right?
The col-, right. Now, you said something in your testimony about you wanna make this look like one building.
Right.
Can you explain to me how it looks like one building when the right side is brown and the left side is white?
Well, you know, I mean, it, in, in the architectural terms, you don't have to be the same color to be a uniform. You could have a contrast, okay, between colors. Okay, so, you know, we do have, the roof is the same color, the columns are the same colors, but we have a contrast between.
Would you not agree with me that by putting two different colors on the front elevation, you're emphasizing that those are separate units?
Well, it identify it, but it doesn't make it, you know, I, 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 I don't have to wear the same color pants and shirt to be, you know, to be.
No, but I'll bet you, but I'll bet you when you wear a jacket, I'll bet you when you wear a jacket, the left side of the jacket and the right side of the jacket are the same color.
Absolutely, that's, okay, if that, if that is an issue that, 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 that you have an issue, we, we have no problem making the same color. If that's really, okay.
I want, I wanna be clear now. So there's, when, when, if this project were to be approved, there's gonna be two bedrooms in each of these three units, correct?
Yes, correct.
So that'd be a total of six bedrooms, correct?
Yes, correct.
Now, the existing house has a total of how many bedrooms?
Um, let me just, uh, hold on. Two units have one, all units have one bedroom.
So we're going from three bedrooms to six, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. And the existing house has how many bathrooms?
The existing house has, uh, uh, I think it has three full bathrooms.
Well, I don't wanna go with I think, is that correct?
No, 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 absolutely. There's three bathrooms, full bathroom.
And we're gonna go from three full bathrooms to three full plus three half, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Now, you testified that the three units have separate utilities. Are, are you able to testify whether the utilities have always been separate, or, or was that added later, or can you not tell?
I can't tell from that because, I mean, I, I visited two years, like a year, two years ago, and it was already there. I don't know what happened in the past, uh.
Okay, but you did testify that it was your professional opinion that when the house was built, it was built as a three-unit structure, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
But you're not sure when the utilities became separate, fair statement?
Yeah, it's a fair statement.
Okay. And the overall height of this structure, you may have said it, but I want to make sure it's clear for the record. What is the overall height of the structure from the grade to the peak?
The existing is twenty-four feet and the proposed is thirty-two.
Thirty-two feet?
Yes.
All right, that was all I had, Mr. Chairman of this witness.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I ask, can I ask the Mr. Menendez a couple of questions?
Perfect.
Mr. Menendez, you just testified that each floor is eight foot.
Right.
The proposed upstairs is eight foot.
Mm-hmm.
You're gonna have a six-foot attic. That's thirty feet. So from looking at the drawing, that only leaves you two feet of foundation, and you have seven rises.
No, that's, that's no, I, what I said was the house, the finished floor is four feet from gray, right? And I said there is a structure for the first floor that you could say one foot, that's five, and then you have A plus one for the second floor and A for the second. So that's five plus sixteen, twenty-one, and, you know, uh, three, uh, sixteen, nineteen, and four would be twenty-three. Twenty-three plus the attic.
Okay, that's that question, thank you for the clarification, if I can go back to the basement plan of the proposed basement.
Sure.
I see the left and the right side, I'm assuming that's egress windows, the print is pretty small on either side. But where is the exits, how would you exit the middle apartment?
Well, the coat, well, you have a stair here, one that you go from the recreational up to the first floor. And this is no sleeping quarters, this is just recreational.
So why is there a bathroom down there then?
Well, because, I mean, you're watching TV, enjoying your family, you don't have to run up to the first floor to, to go to a bathroom, I mean, it's a little bit of convenience.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Well, but wait a minute, is that bathroom in the basement a full bathroom?
No. No, it's not, it's just the, uh, it says bath, right, because normally that's what we call it, but-
It shows it as a full bath.
That's what I'm saying, what is that rectangle?
Yeah, 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 absolutely, I'm sorry, I, my mistake, it is, it is a shower. It is a shower.
All right, well, wait a minute, wait. How many total bathrooms are there in the house that's proposed, again?
There is, uh, one full, two full, otherwise six full, and, uh, three halves.
Okay, well, that was not what your testimony was early.
Absolutely, you, you are, I correct my testimony.
You're going from what is presently three full bathrooms.
Right.
To six full bathrooms and three half bathrooms, is that your testimony?
Yes.
And what is the purpose of a f- full bath with a shower in the basement?
Well, you know, I mean, we provided the convenient, you have a recreation room, you could be exercising over there, and then, you know, want to run up to the first floor and take a shower. You know, that it's like, it's just a convenience and, you know, an additional amenity to the apartment.
Doesn't it invite the use of that basement as a bedroom when you got a full bath down there, Mr. Menendez, Melendez?
I, I mean, I, that, that's really, you know, I, I don't, it's, it's not, it's not designed to be a bedroom.
But speaking as a professional architect, would you not agree with me that by putting a full bathroom down there, you're inviting that use? Given your experience as a professional architect?
I mean, it, 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 as a profi-, I, I would say that, yes, yes, I mean, you could have a guest, you have a, you know, party, and they stay over, and they're sleeping in the basement, yeah.
And, and would you not then have a concern about that center, uh, unit, somebody using that basement as a bathroom, given the la-, as bedroom, given the lack of egress?
Well, it doesn't, it, they both, they all have equal egress, they have a stair that takes you up to the first floor, you know, I mean-
You say they all have e-, they all have equally egress, the side units have outside windows, do they not?
Well, yeah, you're absolutely right on that.
So they don't have equal egress because-
Yeah, but this is not considered egress windows. A egress window, you will have to provide a well, it will have to be within, you know, i- it's not designed to be an egress window.
So none of the, none of these, none of these units then have window egress for the downstairs recreation room, yet they all have bathrooms that invite their use as a possible bedroom, would you agree with you, Mr. Melendez?
Yeah, I, you know, if that's, that's your comment, yes, I will have to agree to that, mm-hmm.
And Don, in addition, they have clo- uh, closets?
Um, I don't see the closet, but I believe you, where's, where's the closet?
There's a little closet.
Right next to the shower.
Yeah, okay.
Anybody else have any questions?
Just a comment, uh, Mr. Melendez, um, not speaking about the interior of the structure, just the outside, I just want to actually put a positive comment out there. The design you did, the facade design of the house, at this point, may be the only thing I like about this application. So I just want to let you know that the, to me, the front facade, uh, would certainly be an improvement.
Kind of looks like a condominium setup there to me.
Well, I'm, I'm along the lines of Bill, I like, I like the, the appearance a lot, a lot more than, than what it looked like now, o- obviously. But I think, um, I, I think the appearance from the outside is, is good. Um, just, just a quick question, and just to, just to kind of elaborate a little bit on these, on these bathrooms. Um, and I, I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but, uh, would the, would the owner be, um, amicable to, uh, to removing three of those full, uh, baths and only make it three full and three half baths, meaning you have a half bath on that in those three units on the basement floor, and that's a question that I would ask of the owner.
I'll, I'll ask him that, and if I don't, you can, but I-
I, I could answer that.
Well, you haven't been sworn yet, Caesar.
All right, but he, he, he can answer the one question now, Mr. Piper, Mr. Spahoe's gonna be sworn, right?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, Caesar.
Yeah, I have no problem, you know, a- actually, the design in my mind is still, you know, taking out, having three bathrooms and a half is probably what I would want. A bathroom in each, in each unit, and then a half bathroom on the first floor or on, or in the basement, just to have somewhere other than upstairs in the bedroom. So if you're in the backyard, and you come into the house, you don't have to go all the way to the second floor, you know, to, to use the bathroom. Or if you're in the basement working out, you don't have to go all the way to the second floor or the first floor to work that too. So I don't, I don't have a problem changing that.
Okay, see, I, that, that I can understand, I can understand the, the, the thought of having six full baths and three half baths in, in he, in those units, that didn't make any sense to me.
Yeah, and I'm just gonna state for the record that our application does say we were gonna use one and a half bathrooms, not two full baths.
Yeah.
So, uh, I think we're, I think we're going to just stipulate that we'll amend it to, uh, the half bath, and we'll have Mr. Melendez change it, we'll put a half bath in the, uh, basement, not a full.
Well, hang on a second, Mr. Piper, I think you, and you, you want, you may want to consult with your client, because I think your client was saying, leave the half bath on the first floor rather than the basement, and we could circle back to that question.
No, I wouldn't say anything different than that.
What, what's the change that was made somewhere that went from what you said as being three full bathrooms and three half bathrooms to being on the plans, six full bathrooms and three half bathrooms, where, because I, I was just gonna question you about that, because that's what you stated in your opening remarks.
Right. Yeah, that's what we set forth in the application, that was, that was my understanding, so, uh,
I mean, we didn't change the plans, the plans have always been the way that we're submitted. You know, you know, just because maybe we didn't put the extra, normally we put for a shower, the shower was always there, you know, I-
But Mr. Melendez, respectfully, you initially testified that there were three bedrooms and three, excuse me, three, um, full bathrooms and three half bathrooms, you drew these plans. And the plans, the plan showed something substantially different than that, would you not agree?
I, I, I agree, but, you know, I work with, uh, a hundred projects, I mean, you know, they said this project had been on the board for two years. You know, I, I sixty years old, my memory is not as good as, it needs to be, you know, so I apologize for that.
A- a- actually, I could, uh, by May, there was three renderings for this property by the architectural firm.
Mr. Spahoe, you're gonna be, you're gonna, no, that's right, you're gonna be sworn, you're gonna get to testify. All right. Mr. Chairman?
Okay, um, are there any other questions of this witness?
Yeah, I did.
Yes, Dave.
So, first of all, you, you described how bad shape this was in when you first looked at it a few years ago.
Mm-hmm.
How, how did it get that way? What happened? Was it empty and ignored and?
No, I, you know, I know there were tenants in there, I mean, I, my owner purchased the property, and I, I don't know what, what went on in the house in the past, I mean, when I, uh, there were a lot of stuff in the house, it was very hard to walk in the basement and and the apartments, until the owner cleaned up the house, I mean, I don't know the history.
All right, but did it look then like it does now? Because I couldn't tell going, I couldn't tell going by it whether some construction had been started and then stopped or not, you know?
As far as I know, you know, we, we, we knew we had to go to, you know, to the planning and, and no permits, I mean, I haven't even done this construction documents. I mean, my drawings have never been used to apply for a permit.
Um, finally, what, what would it take to convert this to a two-family house? What would be involved?
I mean, i- i- I don't think so, I mean, in my opinion, I mean, might as well knock the building down or build a new.
In essence, with all of this remodel, aren't you doing that?
No, because we're still saving the, the majority of the, uh, you know, we're, the foundation, we just adding, we're not even putting a full, full basement, we, in the back, we just add, it's just existing, this is the existing concrete that's there, we're putting a wall, you know, we're creating a crawl space, and we're not adding anything else, I mean, we're besides the, the decks and the porch that are only required, you know, uh, singular, uh, foundations. Um, you know, yes, we are raising up the second floors, yes, we are putting a new crosses on the, on the roof. But, you know, it's not different taking a cape guard and lift it up the second floor. You don't knock down a cape guard to, to put a second floor on it.
But if I can, Mr. Menendez, you said in the beginning of your statement that you believe that this was originally a three-family dwelling because of the foundation separating each floor. Or each, or each space which is less than eight foot. But if you look at the basement plan, you only see a concrete wall on either side, and in the middle, you see two lolly columns separating the middle floor in the basement, so I don't understand where you can say it was a permanent three-story structure built from the beginning. You, you, you are identifying lolly columns in the basement.
Okay, so, but look at the first floor, these are bearing walls separating the three units, and also in the attic, supporting the roof. Okay, so normally, you know, you, why would you build that, a CMU walling here? When, you know, maybe at one point was a common area, but I just know that based on this structure, that there is bearing walls on the first floor, there is bearing walls on the attic, supporting the roof.
Well, that doesn't answer my question as to the basement, but I'm not gonna drill you on the question, but it doesn't show any fire wall in the basement, it shows a girder, two or three, two by eights or tens with lolly columns.
There is demising walls, there is doors in here, this is completely separated from it. This, this basement is not connected to this area.
So it's a wood wall separating the three wa-, the three, uh, units?
Yes, it's a wood construction wall separating the, the basement.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions of this witness?
Yes, let, let me add on to what Rich just said, and Mr. Melendez, okay, we have wood walls separating in the basement, you had mentioned a type of wall separating the units. Um, what are they? Are they firewalls? What are they?
Well, when you have a, a single building and you have differing units, you're not supposed to have a fire, you have a fire rated wall that it could be made out of wood with, with fire rated sheet rock. As long as it meets the UL label. Okay, so that's what they are, they are separating.
So are these, are these five eights or half inch sheet rock?
I, I mean, that's really doing the structural testing, I mean, it's, uh, you know, when I look at a plan, I see it's clear defined that there are demising walls separates, separating the tenants. The three tenants.
Can we go back to the basement plan, because I'm seeing that center section being L shape. So there can't be a fire rating between floors in a nineteen fifty's house.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I don't know if the original had a wall continued here, and they decided to make this an L shape, you're absolutely right, it's an L shape. And if this would be, you know, being three units, this floor has to be rated, I mean, it's something that we could investigate, if that's what it really gonna require, you know? But, you know, that was at the time of the building, I don't know what building codes were applied at that point. I mean, I only been an architect since nineteen eighty-seven.
And then two of those spaces are connected by two sets of doors.
Yeah, absolutely. But they could be locked all the time, I, you know, I just, you know, you're asking me a lot of questions that I don't know what the previous owner decided to. With all your respect.
Anybody else have a question of this witness?
I, can I, can I confirm?
Uh, I just, uh, excuse me, Rich, I just have a question, because I'm jumping, trying to get off of you. That basement was a common area at one time.
That's an speculation with all your respect, I don't, you know, I just know that when I came to expect that two years ago, there were three distinct basements.
Okay, I un-, I understand that, but for that, for lolly columns to be in there, holding the rest of the structure up, and, and then a wall, then the walls were built between the lolly columns, doors added in, and rooms put in in the basement, even though they were unfinished, that was an after, an afterthought.
Well, I don't know, I, I mean, that's, you're speculating there, I mean, you know, the, the most economical way was at that point, you know, to have girders on, on, along these columns and these columns, maybe was cheaper than building CMU walls, I mean, you know, I just giving you all the reasons why that could have been done that way.
Okay, I, um, I just, uh, I, I beg to differ with that, I, I think that, that construction was done, if this building, but, uh, as you stated, was built in the fifties, I'm sure this work down here was built a lot after the fifties, so.
But, but, uh, that was, yeah, I wasn't around that time anyway, but, you know, I mean, maybe, this was an unfinished basement, maybe was, you know, all the, the, the three units have separate, you could see here, hot water heater, furnace, hot water heater, furnace, three different locations, okay, they all have a stairs coming to the basement. And, yeah, you know, you bring up a point, you have bearing on either side with lolly columns in the middle, but when you go to the upper floor, like I testified before, this is a bearing wall.
Yeah, but I'm not, I'm-
Another bearing wall.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you there, I'm, I'm saying that these bearing walls on the first floor are supported by the lolly columns.
Absolutely, and that's really complex, that's the same construction, yes.
These interior walls are just partition walls. And I'm sure if you went in there and knocked these-
No, the columns don't carry through all the way through the roof, I, you know, these are bearing walls that I-
No, no, he's talking about in the basement.
No, these are bearing walls, in the basement, the only bearing is on top of the lolly columns.
Yeah.
Everything else, at one point, this basement looks to me, and Mr. McCormick, that it was common, it was a common area. And these walls are just partition walls separating the three apartments.
I mean, if I were to build this as a licensed architect, I could still design it this way with three units, with lolly columns, with fire rated walls built between the lolly columns. Okay, so, you know?
I understand, I understand exactly what you're saying. I understand, I understand exactly what you're saying. All I'm saying is that we have no history on this building. The history seems to be non-existent. And I don't understand that. And I would like to see some history on this building.
All I telling you with thirty-one, thirty-five years of practicing as an architect in the state of New Jersey, my professional opinion and testifying in front of this board that this was originally designed at three separate distinctive units.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I think, I think we can, I think, I think we can put that to rest only from standpoint of there's a difference of opinion, which we all can recognize that now. Um, and the architect is testifying to the fact that he believes that this was an original structure built for three separate units. Um, whether that's so or not, and whether we want to deep, deep further to find out what the actual construction of the building was, if at all, that's possible. I don't know, but I think our questioning at this point in time between whether it was a thought to be an open area space or whether the architectural test, testifying says that it's three units, three separate spaces. That's right now up for grabs. So let's leave it at that. Um, do we have any other questions from the board, uh, of this witness?
Your honor, I mean, uh, Steve, uh, are we allowed to go to the property?
Of course.
I mean, go inside of it.
Yeah, the answer to that, Ken, is yes, with the, um, um, access granted by the applicant, yes.
Okay, cause I would like to do that.
Okay.
And Ken, when you say inside, you're talking about inside the structure itself.
I'm talking about basement to attic, taking a look around.
Inside, okay.
Yep.
Can I, can I make a suggestion?
Yes, Kathy.
Not a question. Um. We heard before from the engineer that, that, um, he thinks it was built in the nineteen fifty's.
Well, it's the architect.
Yeah, um, yeah. Yes. I'm sorry about that. The architect, um. Has anybody looked at the records for the, uh, of uh, from the assessor's office, the tax assessor's office? Like a number of these applications that we get, we also get that tax form which shows us um, you know, at the last assessment or if there was an assessment back in nineteen eighty or nineteen seventy, what it was, um, what, what it was assessed at. Um, and it'll also will show you when it was built. It was just a suggestion. That's all. Thank you.
Uh, no, I appreciate that. Just so you guys know that, that, that's sort of what I was saying at the beginning is all the materials that we have, I requested everything related to this property from tax assessments, the building permits. And I submitted with the application a copy of everything that I received. In other words, we just don't know where to go to get a history other than the borough of Garwood. And that's, so, you know, if, I don't mind, since we're gonna be doing this with the engineer and seeing if the borough has additional records that maybe they take another look through, but my Oprah request as, as for every record about.
It's the card.
Yeah.
Like it's the record card.
Yep, exactly.
Property record card.
But I don't think in, in, in response to a request like that, I don't think people would think of the tax history, for example. They would think of the construction history. It's worth another, you know.
I'll find out.
But you could ask for that specifically and then.
And I did, so I'll ask again.
Yeah, push, just mention the tax history as well and.
Right, assessment records, including the property record card, hundred percent. I ask for it all the time. So you know, there's no problem in me just making sure that it wasn't overlooked. But I, of course, I mean, that, and that was one of the things I was driving at was, right, I mean, all the information we have about the property has to come from the borough. There aren't any building permits and there wasn't a history. I agree. It should be on a property record card that we don't have, so we'll double check.
Okay, do we have any other, uh, any other questions or comments, not questions of this applicant, of this, uh, witness? Seeing that, I'll open this up to the general public for any questions specific to this witness. Um, moderator, can you open it up? See if anybody's got their hand up or whatever?
If anyone has any questions, please raise your hand on Zoom. No one is raising their hand.
Okay, seeing none, I'll close that portion of the meeting. Okay, um, we're ready for your next witness then, um.
All right, let's, let's, uh, take this, I guess, down off the screen for now, so we can be back to, uh, full size.
Is that something Mr. Melendez has to do?
Yeah, I tried to figure out how you'd like to switch it back.
I, I figured the moderator was gonna take back control.
Yeah.
Mr. Melendez, if you could, um, click stop sharing at the top of your screen.
Well, I have the, uh, okay, so let me see. Hold shift to something now. I mean, I have the, the commands on the bottom, but I could put it on the top. Where is it? Oh, I, I see it. I'm sorry. I apologize. I got it. I had a bit low. I'm sorry.
All right, so Mr. Piper, your next witness.
Yes, we're gonna, the next witness is Mr. Españo, the property owner and applicant.
Mr. Españo, unmute yourself. Thank you. Mr. Españo, do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before the board? It'll be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Okay, and that includes the testimony you gave before, right?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
All right, um. Please state, uh, please, we have your name. Please spell your last name. Give us your address.
Uh, my name is Caesar Españo, C E S A R, last name, E S P E J O. Uh, my address is six thirty-nine Newark Ave, Kenilworth, New Jersey, zero seven zero three three.
Your witness, Mr. Piper.
Mr. Españo, guy, you purchased this property when?
So first of all, thanks everyone for meeting and, and getting this all together. It's been, uh, I bought this property in twenty twenty in March, as a three-family from, uh, Mr. Cantempo, uh, which it was a fully occupied three-family at the time and it was just in really, really bad shape. I, just to give a little background on myself, if I can, you know, just kind of give, you know, the board a little idea of what I do. Uh, I'm a federal officer, been working for the government for Customs and Border Protection for twenty-five years now. And I've always been into property, so I've renovated, built, rehabbed, developed over fifty properties in the last twenty-two years and, um, I, I look for houses that need a lot of repair, fix them up and rent them and just have a rental portfolio of properties in Garwood, Elizabeth, Cranford, New Jer, you know, uh, Linden, the Union County area. Uh, so I bought this property in twenty twenty, right during the whole pandemic, you know. I bought it three-family, fully occupied, in really, really bad shape. One of the tenants had chickens with ducks and the city's been called to this property multiple times. There's a rat infestation because he was feeding all these animals in the back feed and it, it, it was just really bad. The neighbor Augie and the other neighbor on this, on the other side John, I got to meet those guys once I took over. Uh, you know, I just tried to repair it. So my whole goal was to not leave it the way it was and make it better. So my, you know, it's, it's awkward the way it's shaped, the way it's set up. It has one unit on either, you know, side by side by side, but the units to the left have like a second floor, but it's a half second floor with a bathroom. The center hall has a full second floor with two bedrooms, not one. It's just, it was separated. So it had a bedroom in the front and then it had like a, another room in the middle and then a bathroom in the back. All of them have their own entrances. It's been three-family. It's taxed and assessed as a three-family, so taxes have been paid on that property as a three-family since I bought it and I've been paying taxes on it for three years. Thinking that this wasn't gonna be such a, a hard process, because I've done it in the past. I asked all the tenants to move and I really needed to get rid of this one tenant, where, where Mr. Melendez was saying he couldn't enter the building. He was absolutely right. This guy was a hoarder. That was told, I mean, it was, have you ever seen that show, Hoarders? This was one of those places. He had ducks, chickens, uh, just never cleaned, you know. It was one of those type of, and I've done those before. It's nothing new to me, you know, where you gotta clean out a whole property. Um, and, and then I asked everybody to move slowly and once everybody moved, I started cleaning everything out. And it was really, really bad. So at some point, you know, I, at that point, I said, okay, I gotta fix it. I called the architectural firm, which I've worked with in the past, to give me different renderings of what I could do to make it nicer. You know, to fit the neighborhood, to fit the, the city. And, and to this day, you know, obviously all the cancellations of the board meetings, month after month after month after month. You know, obviously there's carrying costs of properties. I'm paying taxes, insurance. I'm maintaining the property, uh, on top of that, just at least cutting the lawn, making sure that I got an exterminator out there to take care of all the rat infestation problems, you know, that was an issue that I had to take care of. And now I'm just trying to make this property beautiful. I just want you to understand where I'm coming from as far as getting this property where it needs to be. Um, so I would say about seven, eight months ago, I, I finally got everybody out and I started kind of cleaning up. As I'm cleaning up, I mean, the walls, uh, you, you know, it has three bathrooms and it actually has a bathroom in the basement already, uh, you know, a toilet. I took all that stuff out. And I'm just trying to get renderings to, to make it beautiful. So the, the rendering that you're seeing right now from Mr. Melendez w- were one of three different designs. And I'm not sure if there was any confusion as to what was presented, but I think the, you know, that, that's still up to be changed, just to make it, you know, whatever could get approved at this point. Anything will do, because if, if I don't get anything approved, then I'm just gonna, what's there, fix it and it's not gonna be the best. And that's not what I want to do, but I've spent so much money and energy and to have the engineering gentleman get sick now, you know, I'm like, it's like I, it's bad luck after bad luck and this meeting right now doesn't seem like it's going that great to begin with, so I'm hoping it is. And I'm, I'm just trying to do the right thing to make this property right and I want to get to work, you know, to, to get, to work on it because there is a lot of work to be done. Uh, it, it's obviously easier to re- renovate a property than to tear it down or, or rearrange it to make it a, a two-family and the you know, what somebody didn't mention, make it a two-family. But when you enter a deal like this and you say it's a three-family, you want to keep it as a three-family, because there's certain, you know, parameters to, to, to to how you invest. And that's kind of where, where I'm at with it as far as, uh, getting it to where I want, where, where I need it to be. Like I said, I've done this in the past. You know, as soon as I, I, I get approvals, I'm putting in permits with the city to get things started. And, and, um, my goal is to get it finished, you know, in four to six months. And, uh, get operational, like right now, like I said, it was, it was rented property. I emptied it out thinking that this wasn't gonna take this long and it has and I'm, I'm dealing with it. Uh, but I'm, I'm really, any questions you guys have for me, things that you want me to change or not do or do? Colors, if you want it to be one color, that's fine. I mean, I, at this point, I just want to make sure that I could work on the property, get it operational and make it, make it a, not a nicer to the whole neighborhood. At the end of the day, this was the worst house on that block and it still is today. And I want to change that. I want to make it the nicest house on the block and, and have the, you know, the neighbor Augie, which calls me all the time, hey Caesar, how's it going? What are you getting done? I'm like, I'm, I'm working, I'm working on it. Hopefully, you know, I could get to work on this soon.
All right, Caesar, I, I just have a few questions and of course, I'm sure the board is gonna have some questions for you as well. Um, a- as part of when you had the tenants leave and you had the, uh, utilities converted or billed to you, um, did you have occasion to ask, uh, the utility providers if there were ever fewer than three meters at this property?
I did. So this, this house, not only is it registered with the state as a three-family, but I've also had all the utilities in my name. The water bill, the electric bill and the gas bill in my name, each as separate units. One thirteen Winslow Place, one fifteen Winslow Place and one seventeen Winslow Place. Uh, and I asked them if they had any records of it and what they said was, the only record they have is, is of it being for three uh, separate units for the water bill, electric bill and the gas bill. And the state has it registered also as a three-family and they do the inspections on it. And it's been taxed and assessed as a three-family and the taxes that I've been paying for the last two years have been assessed as a, as a three-family, so.
You, uh, you provided a copy of the registration certificate from Mr. Von Tempo, the prior owner, correct?
Yeah, and, and when they, when, when I got the CEO for it from the city.
It's part of the evidence, I think. No, and I, I didn't want to cut you off. I just want to say it's part of the materials that we have submitted. So I, and, and, um, you reviewed the, uh, materials that we received back from the borough of Garwood and, and the Oprah request. The, um, first the, uh, letter from the zoning officer in two thousand and one and then, uh, some permit applications and, uh, a violation, uh, you reviewed those documents that the borough provided, correct?
Correct.
Okay, uh, so, Don, I would just move those into evidence, um, that I talked about at the start of the hearing.
Well, identify, um, Scott, which records you want to move in.
Right, separately, not only were these paper copies provided as part of everyone's package, but part of the email as well. The, uh, Department of Community Affairs Certificate of Registration was a separate exhibit, because that was provided uh, by Mr. Españo and Mr. Von Tempo, um, indicating that it was a three-family from when he took ownership in, on, uh, May first, two thousand and one. That's, uh, the first exhibit. And then the others, uh, the zoning officer letter, that was attached separately dated March twenty-eighth, two thousand and one, from Judith Brown. And then the third is, uh, I just put the documents together and, and I did redact, there was a I think there was a social security number or a tax ID number on one of these that I removed. But there's a, a, uh, construction permit dated May second, nineteen ninety. That has a part two also, same date, May two, nineteen ninety. There's a a violation notice dated March twenty-seventh, nineteen ninety-one. And then there's a, another construction permit, ninety-five dash two three six. It's also two pages. It's September nineteenth, nineteen ninety-five. That was all attached as one PDF, so I.
What, what I think we should do with that, Mr. Piper, is, look, we're coming back for another, uh, session on this anyway. We'll organize the exhibits and make sure they're part of the record before it's submitted to the board.
Works for me, thanks.
All right.
Mr. Españo, when you were at the property, could you just discuss the, uh, parking situation? There, where the vehicles?
Yeah, so, so the, the, the property has a driveway that goes all the way to the back and the back right now is completely open. Um, I was, you know, people parked there in the past, so I was just trying to organize it in a way that makes sense for the three units. Re-parking spots for three units and then it has also street.
It's not paved presently, right?
Sorry?
It's not paved presently.
No, it's not paved right now. It's gravel.
Tenants parked back there on the gravel area?
Gravel, mm-hmm.
And, okay, um. And you talked about the, the existing state of the property and the fact that the utilities were separately metered and that's, that was your experience. Um, a- again, just, there, there's no evidence of any building permits for when, uh, the property was constructed. You, you saw the, uh, the material provided by the borough of Garwood. You, you saw the, uh, the material provided by the Borough of Garwood. There's a roof construction permit. Uh, replacing the roof in nineteen ninety and, uh. A plumbing permit replacing, uh, water heater in nineteen ninety-five, right?
Absolutely. So the, wh- when I purchased it, I, I purchased it as a three-family from Mr. Contempo. Three water heaters, washer dryer in each unit in the basement. You can see them, um. Three furnaces that were all separate. Uh, electric meters that were all separate, separate entrances, three rental units. Uh, so I got all the. Uh, the, the rent deposits from the old owner and, you know. It was never, to me, wh- when I spoke, when I hired Mr. Mr. Pfeiffer. I explained to him what I wanted to do. Uh, it's a three-family that I wanted to make just more functional. And he explained to me that in order for me to proceed with. Making it more functional and adding square footage, I had to get a variance to add square footage. So it's, to me, it's never been a contention of is, is it a three-family or is it not? It's always been a three-family as far as what I bought, what I paid for, what I paid for in taxes, everything that I've known since I purchased the property. But you know, obviously there's legal terms to this stuff and he explained to me that yes, you need to get a variance in order to add square footage, which is. What I'm trying to get approved in order to make the property more functional. Right now, it's not. Aesthetically is not pretty. I mean, it kinda looks like a church and I think the board has the pictures of the building itself from. You know, sky shots and the back, the front. You can see that it's just not a, a, a pretty building at all, uh, but if. If we were able to make it just more symmetric. Box it out to give it more room and have two bedrooms that are solid two-bedroom with a nice bathroom and just organize it better. It would bring, uh, obviously a better property to the neighborhood and give it a better situation. So that's. That's what I'm here to get approved. I know there's a lot of legal stuff to this and you know. I spent a ton of money. I didn't think, I didn't think it would cost me this much, but it's a lot of money and I'm just like, wow. I didn't think it'd be this much because I've never had to kind of go through this process specifically, but I'm up for challenges. And then sure enough, this has become a big one. Uh, so. A- at this point, hopefully the board can understand what I'm trying to do here, that I'm, I'm just trying to make something that is dilapidated and an eyesore. And the neighbors complain about something better. You know, I, I'm pretty sure you guys have good relations with, with the community. I, I, I do. They all know me. I'm there. Cutting the lawn, making sure that the, the snow is removed. You know, I, I, I try to do the right thing and they always ask me, Caesar, when are you gonna get to working on it? And I'm like, I'm working on it and hopefully. I could get this approved from the board to, to help me with this process, you know, hopefully. Some of the miscommunications and obviously the engineer being sick is not something that's gonna determine whether this gets done or not, you know, I. Kinda, I, I beg you to help me with this and, you know, I've never maneuvered with, with this city before in the past. Cranford, yes, but not, uh, not Garwood and you know, it's kind of together but not, so. I'm trying to just do, do my best to, to, to get this approved and, and, and move forward, you know? I, I have funded, I'm well-funded to get it done. I, I just need to go ahead.
And that's. We'll open it up now to questions from the board.
Yeah, I, I, I do have, I do have a question. Um. Just out of curiosity, you mentioned that there were, you had originally had three different renderings of, uh, of the. Of the development that you were planning on putting in. Um, were, were, were any of those renderings of a two-family as opposed to a three-family?
No.
No, they were all, they were all renderings and they were all designed for three-family.
For three families. And the reason I might need to make a change, to be honest, is that. Every rendering has a different cost. And given what's happened with the market, I don't know if you know, but wood is just out of control, expensive now. The prices have changed, so I might need to. Scale back on, on maybe doing more or doing less, but I still want the same structure. I just maybe have to do a little less, so if. If anything needs to get changed or the board says we want this, this way. That's totally up, up to, to, to be done or changed if it needs to be in order to get this approved.
Would you be, oh, just out of curiosity, I know you, you've been paying for it as a three-family. But would, would you be amenable to, um, uh, presenting a two-family unit as opposed to a three-family?
It, it wouldn't be financially feasible at tha- at this point to do it. A- a- and, and you know, there's always a plan B. So in my mind, I'm like, okay, you know. I'm hoping this is going well, but if it's not, what, what's my plan B? What do I do if you guys say no? Okay. Well, then my plan would be just to fix what's there. And, you know, just, just patch up what's there and kind of make it, make it work, right? That's not what I wanna do, but that would be my only, uh, recourse at this point. If, if I was to not be able to do the improvement.
Thank you. Um, anyone else from the board have questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, right now, you go. Right now, um. There is one unit that has, uh, uh. Wait, there's, there is, there are two units with one bedroom. And one unit with two bedrooms, correct?
Correct.
And you're proposing to do all units with, with the, uh, with the, uh, two bedrooms?
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
Um. Would you consider? Having. One of those units with only one bedroom. It's not the size, in, in my opinion, it's not the size of the unit, it's the number of bedrooms. Better, you know, um, something to look at and also with the, uh, half bath. That, um. Are you going to just do a half bath, um, in the basement?
I, I, I would definitely be open to just a half bath or no bath. I mean, I don't.
Well, I don't, I personally don't have a problem with a half bath, like in the basement. That's just my personal opinion.
Yeah, honestly, I'm, I'm sorry, but.
I grew up with one.
Yeah, me neither. Actually, uh, there was a toilet there. I figured I'd keep what's existing, but, uh, in my mind. No toilet, a half of, half of, I think it's convenient to have a half bath or some type of area to use the bathroom in the basement, but if. It's not something that would make a difference. And i- the way it's spaced out, it makes sense to have two. Bedrooms with the bathroom in the middle.
Mm-hmm.
It, it gives a, a, a nice space on either side with nice closet space. And I'm, the other possibility is not having a half bath in the, on the first floor, so, you know. Is, is, is up, you know, then, then you get a bigger kitchen. So sometimes people prefer to have a bigger kitchen. And then just one bathroom on the second floor and a half bathroom in the basement, so it's.
Mm-hmm.
Almost like a small town home, you know, as far as the way it's laid out and, um.
Any other, any other question I'll ask you, like I, you know, like ask the engineer, I mean. I asked the other gentleman before about landscaping. Would you be amenable? Uh, working with, uh, Victor's office? Uh, with regard to, uh, landscaping around your property?
Absolutely, yeah. I definitely like trees, trees and nice green grass and I like to keep things pretty, so. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mister, Mister Spahoe, when you purchased that property, said you purchased it as a three-family, did you get a CO that said that?
Yes. I got a CO. I'm not sure if the CO.
Well, that's my question.
Yeah, the CO just says.
Knowledge that it's a three-family?
Yeah, the CO just says it's certified for occupancy of whatever.
Does not say three-family, am I correct?
I have to, I have to look through the paperwork, but I'm not sure if it, if it does or it doesn't. Uh, but it does say that it's certified for occupancy, so.
That's not my question.
So they certified for occupancy and gave me a CO on a property that has three tenants at the time.
Mister Spahoe, my question is very specific. Do you have a CO that you can produce to us? That shows that it's approved for three-family? It's a yes or no question.
I'm not a hundred percent sure, so I can't answer a yes or no because I don't, I have to look at the CO that they gave me to see if it says three-family. But I know that I did get one, so.
Would you agree with me that if you had a CO that showed it was three-family, you'd be showing it to us?
If I had it, probably yes.
Thank you.
But I have show, I have shown that, that the zoning officer and like I said, I bought a three-family.
That's not my question, Mister Spahoe. Mister Pfeiffer, do you have a CO that shows a three-family, yes or no?
I don't have it in my possession and I suspect that it does not.
Have you ever seen such a document, Mister Pfeiffer?
Well, I'm not on, uh, I'm not a sworn witness here, Don, but, uh.
No, no. As, as, speaking as applicant's counsel, have you seen such a document?
Uh, the CO would not have, uh, that information on it.
Well, sometimes they do, do they not?
Sometimes, but not in Garwood, to my knowledge.
Thank you.
I, I have a question. At some point, this house was tagged with the red X. That it was unsafe for occupancy by first responders. Is that still the case?
Yes.
And are you waiting to, for this remodel to make those conditions, um. Yeah, I guess habitable or safe for occupancy?
Absolutely. So what I, what I started doing was just cleaning out the property. And. The city called me up and said, hey, you know what? What, since this vacant and you're not, you're not there, you can just put boarded up. So I boarded it up until this process, uh, gets approved.
So, I have a couple issues or a couple of questions. Uh, I'm looking at. I guess the architectural plans of the basement. And the pre-existing, the existing basement plan doesn't show a bathroom in the basement. You made mention a couple of times that there was a bathroom in the basement.
It was a toilet.
So what plans are we looking at here? Are we looking at the proper plans? Because there's been a few inconsistencies with these plans during the night.
There was a toilet in the basement.
Okay, so.
That, that, that I, that I took out, that I took out and threw out. So I'm, I'm telling you, testifying that I'm the owner. There was a toilet in the basement. But it wasn't a full bathroom that was sketched out when the architect came and did his thing. I'm just telling you that was a toilet.
Okay, and also, uh, when it comes to the, uh, uh, the Bureau of Housing Inspection. When they come and do the state-regulated, um, inspections, they don't tell you, they don't dictate. What the occupancy or the makeup of the houses. If they, if they're called in to do a three-bedroom, a three-family house, they come in and they charge you to do an inspection. And if it passes the inspection, that's what it does. But that's not what the house is designated as by the borough. It has to be designated by the borough as a three-family house.
So, so, uh, just my, my experience with, with the state and their inspections is that they only come and inspect. Properties that are three units and above.
They do not verify with the borough before they come. If you contact them and say, I have a three-family house. I need it inspected or four families, anything above, they will come and do the safety inspection. But they do not dictate whether it is a three-family, a four-family or a five-family. Only the borough does.
I never called them. I just got the three, uh, the three families.
It was registered. It was, it was registered as a three-family, which many people do. Um, but being registered as a three-family with the state does not mean it's zoned to be a three-family. And officially. Uh, approved as a three-family.
Yeah, I, I listen, I'm, I'm all for less inspections from government agencies, so. At this point, you know, that was done before me and I would just keep abiding by what, uh. Requirements the state might have for, for, uh, you know, with the three families and above.
Yeah, the requirements for safety. Yeah.
Yeah, definitely. I, I like, I follow all the rules no matter what. So like you said, you're right. I mean, I'm not.
So, and I, I don't understand the issue with the CO. Then the bank require it? Did you pay, I, I don't know if I'm allowed to ask this, but did you pay cash and not go to the bank? Because the bank. Always requires a CO.
The banks require a CO and the cities require a CO, so I definitely got a CO. I, I, I could go and go through the paperwork and pull it back up. That I could do. I have it somewhere. I just don't.
If you did a, if you did a, uh, an OPA request, that would be part of it.
Uh, again, I didn't even receive that, but, uh, I, I. I don't, frankly, I think as a matter of law, I don't think Garwood does a inspection and other. If it's, if it's the same as Cranford, they're just gonna check to make sure that the, uh. The sump pump doesn't discharge into the main drain and, uh, do a fire safety inspection.
It depends on what their particular rules are. All borough, all the towns use different rules for their CO inspections.
Absolutely.
Carrot services with Cranford, so, uh. And I didn't represent Mr. Estello when he purchased it, but, so I, I can't speak to that at the time.
Yeah, and that's what I was gonna say, uh, the, the lawyer I hired to, to represent me during that closing. Whatever documents needed to, to be done, whether it's CO, fire inspections, uh, title searches. That was all done and, and, and I closed on the property as a three-family. I got the attorney letters. From the, uh, old attorney, the old tenants to get the deposits to, to, you know, so. Like I said, there's never been a question as far as what I bought. I know I bought a three-family, three tenants, three rents, attorney letters. Uh, the state, you know. Code thing and, you know, so everything that I've, you know, as far as I know, it's always been a three-family. I didn't buy anything other than a three-family. Um, just, just to make that clear, I don't want any confusion on whether, what, what I thought. Always thought it was a three-family. That's what I bought. The rents were three rents. You know, like I said, I wanna just keep it the way it is and make it better. That's my, that's my plan. That's my goal. Yes, sir.
Chairman. Yeah, um, Mister Spahoe, just two comments. I'm sure you could tell by the questions that are being asked by the board. You, you, you happen to have a very experienced board with a lot of different backgrounds. And so, um, I have two, two comments. One is number one, I, I'm only speaking for myself. But I think we all look forward to an improvement of this property. Right? We've all been out to it. We've all seen it. We all want something done. Um, uh, so in terms of improvements, we're with you. Um, the question everybody's asking, what we're all talking about is, you know, whether it's a legal three or not. Um, and so a couple of things that you, you might want to look at and, and Mister Pfeiffer, I, I say the same to you. Um, number one, you're not looking for a CO. Okay, you're looking for either a certificate of compliance or certificate of completion. If you get a CO for a three-family, that's hurting you. Because if you find out when a CO is issued, a CO is only issued for a change of use or a new building. So you're actually not looking for a CO, right? So check your documents, see what you have. Um, what Mr. Cabo Bianco said is a hundred percent correct. The state just comes out and says, yep, it's safe for a three or it's safe for a four. That means nothing in terms of the borough. It's not just the borough. It's, it's, it's any municipality, state in New Jersey. I don't care what the state says. If they told me yours was a twelve-family, I'd still look for the borough's records. The other thing is, um, was brought up in what I'm holding up. I know you can't see it, you know, but you can't read it, but. What I'm holding up in my hands is the, the nineteen twenty-two, uh, map that Mister Frazier mentioned earlier. Um. I encourage you to look at this and see if there are any other records because Borough of Garwood. Um, this, this area has never been zoned, in my opinion. Based upon previous documents, right? Never been zoned for a three-family. So that's why we're all wondering. How did this three-family get here? Uh, maybe it was built as one. We, we need a permit. We need something. We need anything you can find out because. I understand and you've repeated it many, many times. We know you think you bought a three-family. We know, we're trying to figure out, is it legal? And, uh, so I just encourage you to, you know, go through the documents, see what you have. Uh, because for, I'll speak for myself, I'm not sold yet. Okay, this is a three-family. Um, I'm looking forward to, I'm looking forward to improvements, looking forward to, to you improving this property. Uh, it is, it is, it is, uh, ashamed of disaster that you, you, that it was when you bought it. Um, I'm still looking at a two-family.
And so. Just a quick, a quick, uh.
Yes.
The zoning officer of the city itself. So when I purchased the property from Mr. Contempo, a three-family. I said, oh, by the way, do you have anything saying that's a three-family? Because, you know. He gave me a letter signed by the zoning officer of the city of Garwood. At the time. Certifying that it's a three-unit. I have to trust that the officials of the city that signed it is a, a legal. I have to trust that the officials of the city that signed it is a, a legal official person. And obviously, if there was any document that my lawyer didn't, he's asked for everything that there's available out there to all of us, including the board. Everything, all the evidence points to this being a three family. The zoning officer at the time signs and the, the old owner kept it as, he kept it safe. And when I asked him for it, he gave it to me just so I could also have something to show that it might be a non-conforming existing three family that's in the R B two zone, but it is a three family. So I understand what you're saying, but at the same time, as a citizen that pays taxes, when you get a letter from the official that is elected or hired by the city saying that this is what it is, there's no reason for me to doubt that. Or, or to, 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 to say that, you know what? I need more evidence in that when there isn't any evidence to be found when, you know, everything that we've tried to get Oprah request, every, I mean, everything points to this is a three family. When it was approved, how it was approved. You know, I'm, I'm a a, a person that bought the home with this understanding. I, I, I can tell that you can see that this is difficult for, for me to try to, it's like you're trying to tell me to prove the negative. When everything that I've presented and I've been told and the city has shown and the taxes are, there's only so much I could put up there. And I want to convince you and I want to try to give you the best argument that I can to say, hey, I, I bought a three family. The zoning officer at the time signed saying that it's a three family. That's an official from the city.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry. Yeah.
You say the zoning officer at the time. You bought this property in what year, sir?
Two years ago.
Okay. And you have a letter from the zoning officer two years ago saying this is a three family?
Not two years ago from the prior owner.
Excuse me. So you don't have one, Mr. Espo from the zoning officer at the time. Would you agree with me? You're referring to the two thousand and one letter. Is that correct?
That's the only letter that I have.
Wait, is that, you're referring to the two thousand and one letter? So not one from the time, but rather a letter from 20 years ago. Would you agree with me?
From an official 20 years ago, I agree with you.
Right. So not, not from somebody at the time that you bought it, right?
No, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have thought to ask for another letter.
Okay, thank you.
From another official.
From a current official.
From a current official.
And I, I understand your question. I'm not going to sit here and try to answer. What I will say is Mr. Barkin has been quiet, but he wrote up very important, uh, section of the municipal land use law before, and I think Steve, correct me, I think it's section thirty-eight. I could be wrong.
Sixty.
Thirty-eight.
Sixty.
Um, sixty. Yeah, I knew there was an eight. Um, he'll mention that to you, I'm sure. And, um, I understand what you're saying. I, I do truly understand what you're saying. Um, but I guess what I'm saying is, um, if we ha, if we never permitted three families here, there's no record showing it's constructed as a three family. There's no C O issued for a three family when it was constructed. I'm not sold yet that it's a legal three family, but I understand your questions. Believe me. We've all been doing this a long time. We, we understand your questions. So see what you can get. Something was brought up earlier was the tax statements. I mean, uh, Mr. Pfeifer indicated you try to get those. Try to get more information.
Definitely.
From Garwood.
From Garwood.
Exactly. Yeah. Right. I don't have it, but you're right.
But you can frame your presentation around this issue now. Not that I'm telling you how to present, and I'm not all doing that, but there is that option and we're not going to conclude tonight. So the opportunity is there.
And yeah, and I would, I would suggest, and that Steve brings up a good point. I would suggest at this point in time that I think it's apparent that we need to have some additional documents if at all possible. Um, unless you're saying that this is it and this is all we're going to get. Um, and if that's the case, then we can proceed if there's nothing else that you're going to ever present. If you're going to, uh, 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 attempt to find some additional documents and we are going to carry this meeting anyway. Uh, my recommendation might be to break off, um, after this witness and, uh, and resume back in, on, at our next meeting and which, which will most probably be in April for this application.
Well, I think the other thing on that, Mr. Chairman, and, and the, uh, I'll invite Bill and, and Steve Barkin as well to, to chime in on this. I think this also begs the question of what is the application really for? Because in part, what we've really been doing is talking about what we would be discussing if we were talking about, um, you know, a certificate of nonconformity. But this is also a use variance application, which is, you know, under subsection D, which is, let's assume that the applicant cannot prove to the satisfaction of the board that this is and has been a three family since time immemorial. The applicant is still proceeding for a use variance to allow a three family. And he's going to have to meet the high enhanced burden of proof uh, under subsection D to get that use variance. And I know Mr. Pfeifer knows that and he's nodding his head. But let's not, let's not lose sight of the fact that that may well be the more likely avenue of relief that the applicant is seeking. And it may well be that these are about as good as the proofs are going to get on um, certificate of nonconformity. And that the real meat of this application may well be the use variance. So I, I think nonetheless, Mr. Chairman, your observation is probably correct. And I, I see Mr. Flynn, who's been tempted to, you know, intently watching this entire thing, uh, this evening, I know is going to be uh, scintillating and, and presenting the planning testimony. Um, but as you say, we ought to come back for the engineer later, engineer anyway. We probably should do the engineer and the planner at the next appearance anyway. But if the board is done with Mr. Espo, maybe what you want to do, Mr. Chairman, is turn Mr. Espo over to the members of the public for any questions. Mr. Espo is going to be back here again with, uh, the experts and the attorney anyway. And if anybody has anything additional they think of, they want to ask Mr. Espo, I have a feeling we can do so on a supplementary basis.
I would, I would agree with that. Um.
And we don't have any objectives of that for the rec, I, I, I agree with your suggestion too.
Okay. So you, you would like to, you'd like to make a continuation of this at a later date from this point on?
Yes, I think that's a fair suggestion.
Okay. Uh, before we leave, I do have to open it up to the public for any specifics of this witness. Uh, so, um, administrator, if you could, um, flag the public and see if anyone has any questions, uh, of this witness?
If anyone has any questions, uh, please raise your hand on Zoom. No one is raising their hand.
Okay. Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the meeting. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I, I tried to intervene before, but I didn't get in touch. Um, so the engineer is not present today. So I guess my question is, if we can, can it go towards Victor? Can I ask Victor a question?
Ask Victor a question. Sure. Victor, you're on.
Okay. So Victor, is it normal in an application like this that they have to put such a large drywall in the backyard of a house like this?
It's a large what?
Is it normal that in an application like this, do they have to put such a large or any drywell in the backyard, the size of this one?
Yeah, because the amount of additional impervious surface being added to the rear property, inside property, yes.
Okay. With that question said, thank you for that. I also looked at the topographical survey and halfway down the driveway is basically higher than the front yard and not quite as low as the backyard. So are all the leaders going to this dry well or they just dump their front dumping into the street?
No, the leaders that we have in the review letter for them to title leaders into the, uh, seepage pit. And to do a, and to do a permeability test of the soil to make sure that the soil can handle it.
Okay.
If not, we normally put the pits near the corner of the site. So if it over tops, you know, we at least we, we don't have water flowing directly during heavy intensity rainfall. It would go into the pit. The pit will slow down the velocity and hopefully drains into the underlying soils.
Right. That's a good, that's good because as I look at the old building, it didn't have a hip roof. So there was no gutter on the left or really the right. But now that we have a hip, we have gutters all around. So I just wanted to make sure that that water was going into that seepage tank. So thank you for that.
Okay, great.
I had a question.
Yeah, Steve.
So, um, the plans that were filed showed angled parking, which Victor commented on as being problematic. But I thought, Mr. Melendez, when you were testifying, one of the drawings you put up showed perpendicular parking, right to this.
Yes, the, the design change. Right. The, the original, the architect had the original version. The engineering plans changed it from perpendicular to the forty-five, to the, yeah, forty-five degree angle.
In fairness to the applicant, shouldn't we withhold the discussion of these engineering questions until the next session when the engineer is here for the applicant?
Well, I'm asking was what's, what's proposed? I'm not going to get into any questions about the design. So which is it that you're?
Angle parking.
That, that's what I was after, Don.
Yeah. Basically you're, from what I gather from the applicant, um, he's willing to make whatever changes are necessary um, or, uh, predicated on that this board would like to see, correct?
Right, absolutely.
Okay.
And I, I don't want to waste anybody's time. You know, so this is something that can't happen. If, if, if you, you guys are professionals, you know what you're doing. You've been doing this a long time. If this is something that's not going to get approved, if you can't, just let me know now. That way I could just figure something else out. I don't want to.
Mr. Espo, Mr. Espo, I think you want to, I think you want to talk to your attorney before you just surrender.
We're going to finish. We have, we're only halfway through.
Oh my goodness. Yes, sir.
And Mr. Piper, one last thing. I know, uh, Don mentioned Mr. Flynn has been diligently watching the whole thing. And I'm sure he probably has mixed emotions right now because he knows he's been sitting here all night and is not going to be able to testify. But I had specifically asked at the last meeting, uh, when, when, uh, John McDonough was here, um, for a specific, you know, information. And I trusted that Mr. McDonough and now Mr. Flynn know what I'm looking for in terms of the neighborhood, in terms of other legal uses in the neighborhood. I look forward to hearing that at the next meeting.
Yes, we, we, we understand and we look forward to giving you that information.
Okay. And on, on a final note, I would say to the applicant, uh, yeah, don't get discouraged, uh, to the point where, where you feel and this is just totally overwhelming because, um, I'm not so sure that that's the case, but be that as it may, just be prepared for our next meeting.
All right. So let, let's discuss then the next meeting and the notice issue, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
All right. So Mr. Pfeifer, I think you have a decision to make and here's, and your client has a decision to make. And, and I know what I would do if I were you. We have the March meeting, which is going to be paper. My own personal estimation is they will take up the whole meeting.
And I'm in agreement with that.
Now, if you want to be just carried to that meeting, I guess we would let you do that. But if I, if we tell you that, I, I don't, I can't genuinely think you're going to really get any time. You're going to still need some time on this application. My own view would be we would carry this to the April meeting. I assume you're going to request that you be allowed to carry it to whatever meeting without further notice and without further publication, which I'm not going to have a problem with. And I will recommend to the board, you be allowed to do that. But the question is, do you want to carry it to the April meeting?
Well, I, I think Mr. Espo is here and um, he can make that decision. I'm certainly going to echo Don with, what you said, we're, uh, if you have an application already scheduled for Mark, March, that's going to take the entire hearing. To me, anyway, it doesn't seem to make sense to proceed in March with the, uh, possibility of presenting testimony and then not being able to. But because Mr. Espo is here, I'll, I'll let him make that decision.
It's April eighth, I think, so.
April, April's fine. I mean, at this point, you're making it clear, March is not an option. So April's fine. I'm okay with April.
By the way, Kathy said it's April eighth. Is that correct?
No, a- actually I'm, I'm showing that it's April thirteenth. All right. I'm sorry.
Okay. I, I didn't even know we had an early April meeting. So thank you Kathy for pointing that out. All right.
Yeah.
So then
Thanks Adele.
With then with, um, with the applicant's concurrence, the suggestion is that this matter will be continued at the April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting at seven thirty P M, which will be via Zoom. And I think, Mr. Chairman, it's the request of the applicant, and I have no problem with this, that they not be required to renotice and republish. But that will require, um, concurrence of the board.
Okay. And I, I told, I, um, I agree with that. And at this point in time, um, I'll make a proposal that there's no, uh, requirement for a renotice for the April thirteenth meeting of this applicant. Um, all those in favor? Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. So there's no reason to have to renotice for this.
All right. So, so for the benefit of the members of the public who are watching this, this matter is carried to be continued at the April thirteenth meeting at seven thirty P M, again via the Zoom platform. There will be no further notice in the newspaper. There will be no further notice served by anybody by certified mail. This statement right now is your notice. That's when we're continuing.
Don, can I just make one point?
Yeah, Steve.
Uh, applicant's counsel just has to be satisfied. I haven't seen the notice. That the notice does state that if necessary, a use variance is sought. I, I don't know that.
Oh, it does. I looked at it.
Okay.
Mr. Piper, you, you, you did notice for use variance, didn't you?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, I, I looked at that earlier, Steve.
I saw that.
Good, good point, Steve. I, I, you know, I welcome you anytime commenting on what I'm doing.
All right.
I appreciate it too.
Thank you.
All right.
One more thing. Okay. Can I just ask, they have the proper paperwork, the, uh, the, the plan, the, the plans for exactly what you're going to propose?
Yes, we, we will make sure that we have that reflected properly.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, with that, um, thank you. And we'll look forward to hearing your application, uh, continued on the thirteenth of April.
Thank you.
Oh, and Mr. Piper, um, with regard to the exhibits, um, send me an email or something. We'll make sure that we have the right things that you want marked.
Will do. Thanks, Don.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, um, let me get back to my screen. And we are now on to our second application, which, um, that's. Does anybody want five minutes or no, Mr. Chairman? Yeah, why don't we take a five minute break? Okay. That's a good idea. We will resume at, uh, nine or eight forty, or nine forty, your turn, your time. Hey, Bill, you gotta talk some, you gotta cough some more.
Thought I was on mute. Sorry about that. I had a C here and it just didn't go down right. I'm good.
Are you sure that was T?
I wish it wasn't, but yeah, unfortunately, it was.
Okay. Well, I think, uh, I think we're just about ready, moderator. I think we're ready to come back online, moderator, if, uh, if we can get, get things rolling again.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, is everybody, uh, is everybody back?
Yeah, you know, it's, it's interesting, I was, um, I was talking to some people who, uh, there was a planning board matter down in Rumsen recently, and it was a use variance. And it went on till, like, on their fourth meeting till past eleven. And the Zoom, they lost one of the people and they went to the alternate. And of course, the thing gets approved five-two, and then the person who was lost was, I was there, I was trying to vote the whole time, and I was locked out of the Zoom.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, and of course, it would swing the vote the other way.
Oh, God.
And, yeah, it was a big time problem.
That must have been pretty ugly, yeah.
Uh, yeah.
I hope that doesn't happen to me.
Well, the point is, the point is, Rich, when we have the vote, we're going to be very careful before, I learned this one, before we shift down to the alternate on the basis that they lost somebody off the Zoom.
All right. All right. Okay, let me, uh, let me get, let us get back to square one here. Okay, we have a, a second case here. We have, um, two thirty-one North Avenue, and that's the applicant, uh, is Dish Wireless, case PB twenty-two dash zero one. And they're seeking a, uh, variance to go from a hundred and twenty-three feet to a hundred and twenty-five foot, um, for a monopole with, uh, related cable and ground equipment and other associated improvements. So with that, is the applicant, um, available?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening, um. Well, with that, uh, I guess, um, you can present.
Sure, thank you for your time tonight. My name is Christopher Quinn, I'm attorney with the firm Pinellas Alper. Here behalf of the applicant, Dish Wireless PCS LLC. They are a new FCC licensed communications carrier to this market, and they're building out their network throughout the entire region. Um, it's effectively a system that's equivalent to every other carrier that you've seen before. So it's just another wireless communications company, uh, which the law says is pretty much categorized the same as an AT&amp;T, uh, T-Mobile, Verizon, or any of the other companies. Um, this property in question, it's block two eleven, lot one, two thirty-one North Avenue, located in the L I zone. Um, I hope this application will not be one where we worry about app, uh, alternates being, uh, having to vote.
Mr. Quinn, you said lot one, isn't it lot four?
I'm sorry, lot four, my apologies. It's, uh, two thirty-one North Avenue, uh, two, block two eleven, lot four. Um, the property is the site of the Garwood Metal Company, and it also contains a telecommunications facility in the rear, between the building and the adjacent railroad behind it. Um, what Dish is proposing to do is propose to collocate on this monopole, uh, there's a number of carriers already there. I think pretty much every carrier i- in this locate, general vicinity is located on this monopole. Um, Dish is proposing to install three antennas on a cap that will be on the top of the pole. Will also, uh, mount will kind of be, I guess, like a cap on, on top of the pole. Um, it'll be related equipment inside of the fencing compound, which will be next to the existing pole. Um, no expansion of the compounds, it's just literally a thirty-five square foot platform with cabinetry next to the pole. Um, because there's already space at the top of this pole for another carrier, it's a very modest height increase. You look there now, you see kind of the pole extending above the top of the other antennas. Um, right now, the top of the pole is a hundred and twenty-three feet. With the additional antennas, it'll be a maximum of a hundred and twenty-eight feet, so it's just a modest increase of five feet here. Um, under your ordinance, we do technically require height guards because of that, this height increase. And we're also seeking minor segment approval, uh, as well. Um, I understand this board has heard this, uh, types of applications before for, um, these types of co-locations and, and, uh, at this point, surprised it's been almost ten years at this point with the federal government came out with, uh, laws that stated that, um, boards' hands are effectively tied here and that, uh, provided that the project doesn't substantially change, um, the facility itself, the local boards are compelled to approve an application, uh, either be a permit or use variance or whatever the type of approvals required, but they're compelled to approve the application. As long as it doesn't substantially change the appearance of the overall structure. That's a forty-seven USC fourteen fifty-five. If anyone would like to read, uh, that in great detail. Um, effectively for this project, the F C came out with guidelines. We meet all of those guidelines, uh, but I think if you look at the project just as a practicality perspective, if you look at the site, you look at what's being proposed here, it's clear that doesn't really make any dramatic changes to what was there before. Um, but I do have one witness tonight that I'm planning to call for direct testimony, his name's Peter Smith. Uh, he's a civil engineer with the firm, um, B and T Group, and he'll discuss a lot of what, uh, Dish is proposing. Um, if there's no other questions, I can entertain them right now, or else I can call Mr. Smith.
Any questions to the board? Yeah, Kathy.
You're on mute.
Kathy, you're on mute.
All right, all right, um, simple question, you said, uh, five feet. Um, I thought you said five feet. But isn't it only two?
No, um, what it says is that, that if you look at the plans.
You're going to one twenty. Aren't you going from one twenty-three to one twenty-five?
So if you look at the plans, it says that the centerline height of the antennas are going to be a hundred and twenty-five feet. That would, with six-foot antennas, that would mean three feet would extend up the center of the antenna.
All right.
I know, it's quite, I just, no, that's a good question because I'm glad, I just clarify that upfront.
Well, let's, let's make certain, and what does the notice say?
Uh, it doesn't say, it just states that it's an extension to the pole.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, we sat.
Yep.
Mr. Smith, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm the testimony you're about to give before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, please state and spell your name, give us your address.
Peter Smith, P E T E R S M I T H. My address is seventeen seventeen South Boulder Avenue, Suite three hundred. And that's in Tulsa, T U L S A, Oklahoma, seven four one one nine.
That must have been a big trip tonight.
I'm very, very happy for Zoom calls. Although it's.
Do you want to qualify your witness?
Sure, sure, sure. Uh, Mr. Smith, by whom are you employed and what capacity?
Uh, I'm employed by B and T Group, I'm the Vice President of Engineering.
Can you give the board the benefit of your educational and professional experience, please?
Sure, um, I have a degree in architectural engineering that I received in nineteen ninety-five from Oklahoma State University. Uh, that means if you do the math, I've been an engineer for twenty-seven years. Um, licensed in the state of New Jersey. Uh, I've been at B and T now for fourteen years, uh, in various roles and seven years in my current role as Vice President. Uh, in that time, I've worked on thousands of these cellular projects, uh, in all fifty states.
And have you ever had testified before aboard in the state of New Jersey before?
No, I haven't.
But you are a licensed civil engineer in the state of New Jersey.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I would submit Mr. Smith as a licensed civil engineer.
I think he's a, is, uh, certainly qualifies as an expert engineer, and I have a feeling that he's probably particularly an expert in these cell tower things.
Accepted.
I recommend that, uh, he'd be expected as an ex, accepted as an expert witness, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely.
Great, Mr. Smith, your office prepared the plans or submitted as part of this application? Is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, um, I'm going to ask you to, uh, describe it, I think it might be easiest to share, uh, a couple of the sheets of the plans.
Absolutely.
To, to make this easier on the board, to describe what's there on the property, point out how the cell tower situated the property, and then what it, what, uh, Dish is proposing to install here as part of this application.
Okay.
Quite an easy way. And I'm going to add, the plans that you're going to share are exactly what was submitted to the board, no changes at all, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Fraser, I don't think that requires us to mark this as an exhibit.
No, if it was, if it was the part of the, uh, submission, it is not, but do, do we want, uh, Mr. Smith then to have screen sharing, uh, control here?
Yes, I know, so that's okay.
I would appreciate that.
All right.
Administrator?
Where's the moderator? Oh, there she is.
Yes, how can I help?
Oh, if you would give Mr. uh, Smith, Peter Smith, screen sharing control.
Got it.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to ask you maybe to start with, um, I think, probably the best sheet, start with maybe A one. Then I'll ask you, uh, to just describe the overall site.
Okay, uh, this is, uh, as Chris said, this is a new, um, telecommunications equipment on an existing site, uh, accessible from North Avenue. And, uh, the access runs there, uh, between and behind two existing kind of light, uh, industrial buildings. Uh, and then the back, the, the south, uh, side of the telecommunications, uh, site is a railroad track, I believe. Uh, most of what you see on left-hand sheet here is existing, uh, it's existing access, it's existing compound surrounded by an existing chain link fence that you see here. Um, inside that compound, there are multiple existing, uh, structures, existing shelters. Um, that area that Dish proposes to add is, uh, over here, shown in this little area here, highlighted. And then, uh, enlarged up in the upper right-hand corner of the sheet. Uh, it's small in comparison to the other existing tenants, it's five-by-seven footprint, uh, it's sitting on a metal platform, and it consists of, uh, three cases, three cabinets that sit on that platform. Uh, that in fact has cables that access the tower, uh, underneath this ice bridge that you can hear, see here, the ice bridge somehow is existing, but everything else in this little blow-up is new. Uh, the bottom right-hand, uh, picture on this, on the sheet here shows, um, the fiber, a new proposed fiber line coming in this green line you see drawn over the map, uh, coming back to the, um, compound to a handheld box. You can make that a little bigger. And I believe that's, uh, underground through this access easement.
Okay, and then can we describe, I guess, maybe go to the next sheet, which I think will show the antennas, the existing pole and the, so this is sheet A two?
Yeah, sheet A two, can you guys see that now?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, on the left side of this drawing is, um, the tower elevation. It shows, of course, all the existing panels and antennas and, uh, dishes that are on the, uh, tower already. Uh, our proposed work is up here at the top. As Chris mentioned, uh, and you all pointed out already, uh, this rad center liner here, rad center at one twenty-five, that, uh, should indicate the center of those antennas, where graphically it shows kind of closer to the top. So the one twenty-five foot is correct for the centerline that we're requesting, uh, but the, uh, I believe these are six-foot antennas, the, the, uh, the top of the antenna would, um, protrude this one twenty-five potentially, um, by a foot or two.
So it'd be about one hundred and twenty-eight feet?
Yeah, at maximum, it will be one twenty-eight, yes.
And size of the antennas are consistent with the other antennas here, they're typical, uh, telecommunications panel antennas?
Yes, typically, and telecommunications panel antennas are, um, well, if you can call them typical, they're typically four foot, six foot, or eight foot. And these are six-foot antennas. So they'll be smaller than some of them on the, on the tower. Uh, then at the bottom of that drawing, you can see, um, in relative scale, the, uh, the, um, cabinets and the platform at the bottom. The upper right-hand corner, uh, of the drawing shows the platform at the top of the tower, so that the, um, you see the antennas here, and marked A one, B one, and C one. And then the rest of this is a, uh, antenna support platform, and then in the middle, you can see how it clamps onto the tower. And the bottom right-hand corner are just, um, antenna supplier specifications.
Okay, and again, the colors of the antenna will be consistent with the other colors of antennas on the tower?
Uh, yes, absolutely.
And the, I guess, mount or the cap or the extension that's going to, uh, what's going to be used to support the antennas on top of the tower is also going to be consistent color with the existing tower?
Yes.
Um, in terms of structural analysis, uh, prior to filings application, the applicant, uh, secured a structural analysis and confirmed that this installation will meet all applicable, um, structural requirements, the tower is able to accommodate this additional load here?
Yes, that, uh, tower analysis, uh, takes into account the current loading, um, taking advantage of any, um, old equipment that's been removed or decommissioned, uh, just looking at the, um, current loading.
And, and I think there's a comment in the Board of Jure's review letter that mentioned that, you know, about why this changed, or but it's, uh, uh, again, we submitted a structural analysis and the, I believe the percentage was ninety-seven point seven percent. Except also no additional tower modifications or, or anything is required here, correct?
Correct.
And again, that's changed because other carriers have come down over the past years, or it's just changing tendency and occupancy on the tower.
Yeah, there's a lot of changeover on these towers typically.
Um, any lighting or signage proposed on the tower?
Uh, no, there wouldn't be. No, there wouldn't be any new lighting or signage for this installation.
Now, I'll go through kind of the federal law requirements that the FCC came out with. I mentioned before, do that we're submitting, we submitted this is not a substantial change in the actual tower structure. Under the FCC guidelines, the installation doesn't increase the height of the tower by more than twenty feet?
No.
It's only five feet. Doesn't increase the height of the tower by more, does increase tower width by more than twenty?
No.
Any tower width proposed at all?
Power width changes? No.
Yeah. We're not adding more than four cabinets to the tower, to the base?
No, we're not. That's correct.
Our cabinets are smaller than the other cabinets there, so it's not greater than ten percent of the volume of all the other cabinets combined?
Correct.
Aside from the utilities and there's no other excavation, nothing being proposed outside of this compound?
No, not outside of that one fiber line coming in.
And I'll be along with the other utilities, correct, with all the other carriers?
Correct.
And again, we're not defeating any concealment efforts here to the tower, it's gonna be consistent with what's there already.
Yeah, correct.
And again, it's consistent with, I mentioned before, this is all the other projects that were proposed here, correct? One other point in our review letter, I mentioned two things about the access gate, the access gate's locked and it'll remain locked?
Yeah, the tower facility owners regulate those gates. We have to, typically, we have to call their office to even get access ourselves. So yes, they're locked.
And then also there was mentioned about doing some cleanup around the area to make sure there's no trash that's around the tower. We'll make sure that's taken care of. We'll contact the property owner and the tower owner to make sure everything's taken care of with respect to that requirement as well. Correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, I have no further questions for direct testimony. We can either go through Mr. Vaneger's letter, if there's anything we didn't touch upon, or if the board has questions, I think we're happy to answer them.
I have a question. Go ahead. All right, Mr. Smith. The cables that will be coming off of your antennas, are they gonna be internal in the tower or external?
No, sir, they'd be external. There'll be one cable. Dish utilizes a pretty efficient setup. It's a hybrid cable supplying power and fiber.
Okay, and you were talking about any decommissioned cables or would you be removing any?
No.
Up the tower?
No. Decommissioned equipment that's come off in the past would have had those cables removed in my experience. So this will be new installation for Dish, so therefore a new cable with no decommissioning.
Okay, and that cable would basically blend in with the tower?
Yeah, it duplicates the cables that are on the tower already.
Okay.
For the fact that it's a single instead of multiple.
Oh, yeah, because I know in the past, every time we asked for them to go internally, they said yes, and they would be external. So just
Yeah, there seems to be, typically, in my experience, that's kind of a serviceability issue. It's, it's more easily serviced, monitored, checked for cracks, things like that over time is why they like it on the outside, yeah. And there's, there's a, you know, there's several cables already on the outside.
Yes, I know, I know that. All right, thank you very much. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Steve.
You were hoping it was Steve. Okay, Mr. Smith, a couple of quick questions about the monopole antenna industry right now.
Yes, sir.
The question is, why are we putting up more antennas? And what I mean by that is what you read about is we have smaller I'm not gonna have the right words, okay? But, you know, smaller antennas, antennas that can be placed in, you know, church steeples, antennas that can be placed on existing buildings that don't have to be so high, on and on and on about the progress that the industry has made. So why are we now putting, and I'm gonna tie in two questions here, why are we now putting additional antennas? And I apologize because your attorney, Mr. Quinn. It seems like we went from one hundred twenty-three to one hundred twenty-five to a higher of one hundred twenty-eight. So why are we putting on additional antennas and what is the bottom line height of the top of the tallest antenna?
I think I can actually probably answer both of those. So just because typically what you're referring to in terms of those other installations are that oftentimes you'll see in various communities, normally a more denser populated areas. You will see, or ones that have very kind of small pockets of coverage issues. That might be only a block or two in size, you will see these microcell sites or DAS networks that are installed on light posts, on towers, on buildings or whatnot. They will only serve a couple of blocks typically in radius. So they're really meant to work in conjunction with these already existing tower sites. And really to give some small relieving of coverage where there's already a service deficiency. That's how that technology works and there's good and bad parts to it. The good part is that you don't have, you know, a tall tower. The bad part is that those, because they have such limited footprints and only serve a couple of blocks, it might take fifteen or sixteen of those sites to give the service level that this other site would serve. So, so, and that includes into residential neighborhoods into, you know, throughout, so that doesn't really take into account where the existing towers are. In Garwood, this site, existing site is really serving all of the carriers, all of the existing carriers right now. And Dish is a new carrier to the market. So while they wouldn't necessarily be looking just to supplement its coverage to find a small gap, they really are looking to, to have their initial network and launch their network. So utilizing this existing structure is the design that you would see carriers use. So again, it's, those types of antennas are really
Right, I understand, I understand, I apologize, I understand. All right, so the second question then, what's the bottom line height?
This height, it's one hundred twenty-eight feet.
Now it's one twenty-eight, okay.
Yes, and again, that was just a mismark on the plans.
That's fine, I just want to make sure what it is, what it is we're looking at. You, you actually led me right into my next question was, and it goes back to Mike Venus' question about the decommissioning of some equipment. I have, I'm looking at a picture I took today of the cell tower. Okay, it appears to me that there are four levels of antennas. With the application tonight, I have what you submitted and I appreciate everything's been submitted. Three resolutions, OmniPoints, Sprint Spectrum and MetroPCS. Is there somebody else up there?
I believe that AT&amp;T there as well, I just, I only have the OPR forms from that were provided to us. Sprint actually is no longer there. They're one of the decommissioned carriers. If you, if you notice in the marketplace, a number of them have consolidated. They still operate at various different frequencies, but Nextel isn't anymore. But I don't know, I will only have what the bureau was able to provide us in terms of its other.
Okay, well, okay, that's good, and that leads me right into the next question then. If Sprint Spectrum is decommissioned, they're not on the tower, why can't a dish just go where Sprint Spectrum is and not put antennas higher?
Again, the tower is actually designed to have, are designed to actually have antennas at this height, so it can accommodate that.
To be honest with you, okay, that doesn't answer the question, no. It might be designed to hide, to have twenty different sets of antennas, I don't care, but I'm concerned about his height. This application is putting in more, why can't Sprint Spectrum, their, their layer of antennas be removed? And this be in its place?
Can I, you did let me finish. Please let me finish, okay? Decommissioned antennas are not within our purview and whatnot, but what's, I can tell you that Sprint had been decommissioned previously. What was made available to us for the tower company was to go at this height. By putting antennas at this height as well, it will reduce the number of towers that Dish will require throughout the entire area. So as I'm sure you've heard this a number of times from other carriers. Number one, the higher the antenna, typically the farther the signal's gonna travel. Right? If you make Dish go all the way to the bottom of the antenna, all the bottom of the pole, it's not gonna travel very far, and you're gonna see us again for another application. Where other carriers can actually have their signals travel for them, from the ones that are existing. It's a challenge that they have when designing their net. But this particular site, this tower, if you look at it, the tower actually extends above the pole, the pole actually extends above the top of the highest antennas already. You normally see carriers, if they want, need to extend the poles, go up ten, fifteen, twenty feet higher. If you're looking at the photo that's being shared right now, the pole itself is actually already extends above the height of the top antennas. So Dish is just utilizing that, has a very small modest increase. And is able to do that and will serve better, community better, and will not have to come back for as many sites.
And I would add that
Wait, and at the same point in time, what, the, the government came out and said that as long as we're not extending a pole by more than twenty feet or the greater of ten percent or twenty feet of the pole, then it's not a substantial change. So again, it's what the law says that they're entitled to do, but on top of that, this pole is already there, the height of the pole is there. It's a very modest cap on top of the, on top of the pole.
Yeah, I would, to answer your question in kind of a common sense way, the FCC requires carriers and has required Dish to maximize the percentage of the American population that they serve. So Dish is in the position of, they're on the shot clock with the FCC. They have a certain amount of time to flush out first seventy percent of the population of the US. And then I believe it goes to ninety percent, forgive me, I don't remember ultimately what it ends at, but a site like this, having real estate at the top is, is incredibly advantageous. It, Chris is right, I mean, projecting from this elevation will allow them to go you know, I don't, maybe twice as far, if you can imagine, there's not really any, any real estate lower on the pole. There's a little, there's a little unidirectional thing that's kind of interrupting that gap halfway down the pole. So in fact, this pole might not work at all if they're not able to access the real estate that's available at the top. It could result in several adjacent poles all being accessed so they can fulfill their their duty to the FCC.
Right, and I understand that. I'm looking at Sprint Spectrum's resolution that was submitted as part of the application. Pole at that time was a hundred eighteen feet. So has it been the situation that the top two antennas, maybe it's the top one antenna that I'm looking at? Um, yeah, the antenna is on the pole. Have actually been additions to the pole? Similar to what you're proposing tonight?
It looked like the one the two thousand nine approval for MetroPCS did increase the height of the pole.
All right, hang on a second, MetroPCS, okay. Excuse me, Mr. Quinn. First of all, your answers and the statements that you're making here are invaluable. However, at some point, it seems to me, you're, you're doing an awful lot of testifying.
I was gonna comment on that, but I let it go.
And, and, and it may, Mr. Quinn, I appreciate your, it's right, maybe you should be sworn here. Because it's clear the applicant is gonna be relying an awful lot on the factual information you're providing as well as that of Mr. Smith.
Quite frankly, I, I, my intention was that the information I was giving was more informational for background. The burden of the applicant is to only provide really the engineering components that Mr. Smith testified to. And under the federal law, that's what the applicant has to provide. Again, it doesn't go into play about trying to justify the height or talking about the heights as long as it's within twenty feet and not, and less than a twenty-foot extension of the height, the FCCs came down and said that. So I was only trying to give information as to to provide evidentiary testimony.
All right. I want to go back to the height for one second, because I just want to understand, Mr. Smith. So the height of the pole, when, if, in the event that this application is approved, the height of the pole will now be one twenty-five. But the height of the antenna sticking off the pole will be one twenty-eight, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
All right, I apologize if, that's it, but that, that's the level of dumbing it down that I wanted to make sure I'm understanding. All right, thank you.
Of course.
Mr. Fraser, I appreciate you bringing that, those concerns up because, and Mr. Quinn, I do not in any way, shape or form want to get argumentative, but that same thought occurred to me, and I'm like, he's the attorney, he's presenting an awful lot of testimony here. I didn't say anything, but I appreciate Don bringing it up, and I appreciate your understanding of our concern there. So continuing, all right, so this tower was at one time, and I appreciate you pointing out the MetroPCS application, it was at, it was at one eighteen. And I am very familiar with the, I say very, you're more familiar, I'm familiar with the, the law that you're talking about regarding when an application has to go before a board and when it's simply handed by a zoning officer, for instance, change of carrier. But you know, this pole is now a hundred, hundred, what do we, a hundred twenty-three right now? And so, you know, I, I see how it went. Hang on, you were correct, it was MetroPCS where it went from a hundred and eighteen to a hundred twenty-three. So we're going a hundred and twenty-eight now for Dish. And, and, and I'm hearing and I understood your, Mr. Smith's response, or maybe it was yours, Mr. Quinn. Your response regarding Sprint Spectrum. But I found Mr. Smith's response to Mr. Venus' question very interesting. Because Mr. Venus' question was, you know, are you removing any, any equipment, any decommissioned equipment? And Mr. Smith answered, no. I was wondering if, you know, previous users had removed equipment. But it sounds like even if Sprint Spectrum has removed previous equipment. Are you saying that the, and if I have the terms wrong, I apologize, that the cell tower owner, maybe that's the wrong term, is the one who dictates where people go on that tower? Because I want to go back, right back to my previous question, which was if we have a decommissioned carrier, why can't Dish go where a decommissioned carrier used to be if they're not there anymore?
Oh, I, I mean, they can go where a decommissioned carrier was. I say can, now they're, they're limited by the physical proportions of the new equipment versus the old equipment. Which is, can be substantially different. They're operating on different bandwidths, different frequencies, different antennas, they have different radios. The equipment can be substantially different if, in fact, sometimes the, you know, the antenna sizes can be really four, six or eight foot. So it could be that there were four-foot sprint antennas somewhere near the middle of this that have at some point been taken down. And then, and then the six-foot antennas won't physically fit. I'm just guessing, I mean, it could be, it could be that the RF engineering, there's not enough room for the antenna signals to propagate because there's too much too many antennas too close. I'm just kind of theorizing there, I probably shouldn't do that.
Just to be clear, and it's not just the tower owner saying, go here, go there. But the tower owner has to make sure there's also no interference between the carriers? Which requires vertical separation between the antennas, is that what you're saying?
Yes, I understood that from Mr. Smith's response. Um, so, and Mr. Smith, I greatly appreciate what you said, because you can put a lot of possibilities out there. Has anyone actually looked to see if with the decommissioning of the other equipment, that now a lower set of antennas, Dish's antennas, can be placed on this tower without like I use Mr. Quinn's words, and I'm probably gonna use them wrong, without interference with the other carriers? You know, our intent here, to be honest with you, it's a used variant, so you know, why do we want to put this higher? I really don't want it to go higher. Ken? Has anybody physically, intellectually looked at? Is it possible to put Dish at a lower level so that, and it doesn't interfere with other carriers?
Judging by the site photo that I see here, I do not see room, um, in my opinion. Below the top of the tower for, um. For a, uh, primary cellular tenant.
Mr. Smith, can we go to the previous drawing that you were showing of the elevation of the tower? Because maybe the picture and the drawing. Are contradicting each other because the drawing shows that you have some real estate below the 103 foot elevation.
Let's see. 75. Let me forgive the toggle here for a second. It's right in here on this picture. That's a little, it's unclear enough in the picture, I think. Um, I don't know. I can see something there, but I couldn't tell you what that distance is. Um. I think that that is this panel here.
And that's what's causing interference? Uh, would dictate that we can't use that spot?
Yeah, I would, yeah, I would guess, yes. I'd be, that, I'm not guessing. That would be my opinion. Is that, um. This, this space has, you have to have clear distance between the top of this antenna, existing antenna and the bottom of the, of the future proposed antenna. Um, and I also don't, I don't know what the tower, what the tower owner knows. I don't know the. The frequencies of these equipment, of these antennas. I don't know if they, um, compete with each other. Um, there's, there's a level of knowledge here that's, that the tower owner would have.
And again, again, I, I, I'm not trying to belabor this, but the. The regulations that govern this don't. Dictate that we, carriers have to go to the below, to the lowest, lowest slot available.
Nor, Mr. Quinn, are we dictated to grant you a use variance for a height. So let's get off of that, okay?
Well, I, okay, if, but that, a court might disagree with you on that.
Understood, understood. We can disagree. I, I would appreciate it, okay, greatly. If we, before our board acts in terms of granting additional height to the tower. That Mr. Smith or, you know, if, if, I know it's a long trip from Tulsa, you know, somebody else. Uh, from the, the business, the engineering firm, look to see if indeed. Dish can be placed in between. I know Dish wants to be the highest. We've been through so many of these. Everybody wants to be higher. You know, I just see it going from 118, 123, 128. And I look at the, 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 um, structural engineering information and everybody's like, oh, it's okay, it's okay, it's okay. But, you know, it, it's just like, well, at some point it's not going to be okay. And, and, and how high are we going here? So I don't want to belabor the point. I would greatly appreciate it if we could find out if indeed Dish could go lower. Can you do that?
If I could have a minute, let me see if I could reach someone that I feel able to answer that question. Okay?
Sure.
We'll take, we'll take a three minute recess.
I haven't had, I haven't had a recess in years, Steve.
And Bill, if they do come in without raising the antenna, an application before this board is not necessary.
I agree with you.
So normally they, normally they investigate that because they don't want to go for use variance. So. There'd be a co-location. And I would have to sign off as zoning officer. It does not require a board submittal.
I agree, I agree, because I've signed off on them. So I, I, I agree with you. I'm sorry to take everyone's time at 10:20. I apologize.
Yeah, you're right, Bill. You're, you're absolutely right to do what you're doing. Because the easy way would have been to have a list of all the antenna and, and what they're being used for and whether or not any of them are not being used. I mean, that's a simple thing to make.
Appreciate that. So Steve, you mentioned time zone before. So you're in Houston?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I'm, uh, I'm flying back tomorrow.
Oh, oh.
So, yeah, I've been out here for three weeks.
Oh.
And Kathy, how long you been back?
I'll be back in March.
Oh, okay.
March 20. March 22nd, I'll be back because, because Lisa's, uh. Shower is, uh, April 3rd, her baby shower.
Oh, so, so you're still down in Florida?
Yeah.
Why, we got Florida, we got Tulsa, we got Houston, anybody else?
Just Garwood.
I'm not that far away. I can be home in, in a couple hours.
Never say just Garwood, Rich.
You, you know, as long as we're in a timeout, Bill, I have a question. If this is. If this is approved. Can the tower be extended or is this the last antenna ever to be installed on this tower?
I'm not going to touch that.
Okay.
That's the $60 million question.
Okey dokey.
Not according to the FCC.
That's right.
Good. Hi, I'm ready. We are ready to, uh, begin.
Okay. Uh, let's, uh, let's rejoin.
Sure. And I'm going to ask, um. Steve Lingard. Uh, to raise his hand to be promoted to a panelist here.
Okay, great. Don, Don is offline. He lost computer power. He's logged back in.
So I think I, I, I think, uh, Mr. Lingard, once we get started, Mr. Lingard will be able to make this a little bit easier or not. And, and let you know they did go through the effort too.
I think you've been, you've been promoted to panelist.
Mr. Quinn, I want to thank you for going this extra mile. I really appreciate it.
No, I understand, I understand. And like I said, it's something that we. Again, I'm happy to, I'm happy to address the question.
Don, you're back?
I think he jinxed himself with his comment from the last, uh.
I've promoted Mr. Lingard to panelist, but he's not moving over. Okay.
Okay.
Here we go.
Okay. Steve, you're on once, I guess, uh. Um. Once Mr. Fraser's back on, he's able to connect, I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself and take you and start video.
Alrighty, can you hear me?
Yeah.
How come I don't have a picture? How come I don't get a picture?
You want a picture or pitcher?
Don't answer that.
Yeah.
Ah, you're not under oath yet.
Let me try to.
Uh, there we go. Excellent. So we're just waiting on Don. Hopefully it'll be another minute or repeating call in.
Yeah, he said he was going to try to call in on his iPhone.
That's, that is the challenge. There's wonderful things for Zoom. The downside is a, a thunderstorm in July. That you don't really want to think about, but one section of the town goes out and, and that, and the meeting has to stop.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. So Mr. Lingard, before you get started, we were, while you were gone, we were asking like where people were. We have a few people out of state. Where, where are you?
I am actually, I work out of the, uh, New Jersey office for Dish, uh, but I actually live in Rochester, New York. Where the sun, sun shines, uh, 20%, 20% of the time, maybe? If that.
That's a good one.
Let me see if I can get a hold of Don. Uh, there he is, let's see. Tell moderator to let him in. Uh, moderator, can you let Don in?
Um, I, I will when I see Don, uh, in the meeting.
He's, uh, apparently he's on. He said, uh, tell moderator to let me in, please.
He's not showing up in the list of attendees.
Okay.
There he is.
Okay.
I think he just jumped up.
Been promoted to panelist now.
Okay, great. Thank you. You back with us, Don?
I'm here. Can you see, can you hear me or see me?
I can hear you, yes.
Hear you.
All right. There we go.
Okay.
All right, so I'm sorry, folks, technical difficulties.
Uh, what I was going to do is we have a representative of Dish available, Mr. Lingard. Uh, and I just asked him to be sworn in and he can hopefully answer the question and put it, uh, uh, address the board's concerns.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Lingard, do you solemnly swear a firm testimony? You're about to give the truth, the whole truth and nothing but.
I do.
Okay, please state and spell your name and give your address, sir.
Uh, Stephen Lingard with a V, last name L I N G A R D. Address is 266 Cross Gates Road, Rochester, New York, 14606. I work out of the, uh, New Jersey office for Dish, but working remote since COVID.
So, Mr. Lingard, can you describe your position with Dish? For the applicant?
I'm a site acquisition specialist, um, also a zoning manager. Uh, been in the industry for well over 20 years, been with Dish Wireless for six months now.
And you're familiar with this particular project?
I am.
So you were asked before, or you heard us talking before about the availability of other spaces lower on the tower. Um. Were we directed, I guess, uh. Dish asked about all available heights for this particular facility. Is that correct?
Yes, uh, typically we will approach the, uh, the tower owner, uh, which this is, uh, Crown Castle. And they basically direct us on the available rad centers based on frequencies of existing. Um, antennas, we have to have separation. So they directed us that the 100 foot mark was not available. Um. So they directed us to the top of the tower. I'd like to also talk about the decommission portion that I heard you folks talking. We have no control over where and when another company decommissions their towers. There are some. Cases where we're, we're finding that out if it's done. Um, in this particular case. What happens also is sometimes antennas are taken off towers and they're decommissioned, but the rent continues. So it still excludes us from that location. Um, I believe this wasn't, I, I believe this was metro. Uh, but again, just because antennas come off a tower, doesn't mean that that space is available per crown. So. The, the tower owner, whether it's American Tower, Crown Castle, SBA, they direct us where we have to go on the tower.
And they did not make that space, that slot available to us.
Correct.
Okay. So I think I, we gave a bunch of reasons, but I think at the end of the day, even if it was viable, it wasn't available to us by the, by the.
Correct.
Mr. Lingard, I, I appreciate you coming on. I really do. Under such short notice and providing the answer. I, I'm going to, going to press one more question. Um. Did they give that to you in writing and can we get that from you?
I could definitely get you the, the confirmation from, from Crown that, that is the available rad center.
That would be greatly appreciated. I do not doubt in the least what, what you say, but. You know, as I've said earlier, I don't know if, it sounded like you were, I guess you were on in the background. Um. We've gone from 118, 123, 128. Um, you know, I see Crown Castle, they're just going higher, higher, higher. And I'm wondering if they, um, if Sprint was decommissioned, if they had. You know, if indeed they're still paying rent or, uh, if Crown Castle just wants to get a higher. Um, uh, network up there. I would wager, and I don't know this, I conjecture. Probably pay more, the, the higher you are, because obviously you're able to spread out your communications wider. So I, I would greatly appreciate i- if, if you could get that from them and if they could indicate, you know, who's at what level. Um.
Yep.
Mr. Quinn mentioned earlier, uh, perhaps at one of the, we, I have three resolutions, but there seems to be four users out there. And, and, you know, Victor i- is a zoning officer. And he's through these tower applications before we understand co-location. We understand you don't have to go before a board if it's, you know, an existing lower co-location. Um, so maybe AT&amp;T came in under that scenario. But we only have three resolutions, appears to be four carriers. I'm very curious as to, you know, who's on their, their heights.
I could, I could definitely get you that information.
Sure, I greatly appreciate that.
And, and we requested that be a condition of approval that we can provide after the fact to the, uh, to the board for its files.
Would be excellent.
I, I'm, I'm sorry. Can I, can I address something else that I heard you folks talking about earlier as far as small cells? Uh, um. Dish is pretty, this is a pretty unique build. Uh, they're very aggressively, um, again, because of the, the population that they, they, they have to cover. Their whole goal is co-locations. We're going on existing towers, existing rooftops. We don't want to build towers. Uh, the build plan is use as many co-location sites as possible. Now down the road, there is some talk that to fill in gaps in certain locations. Small cells may become part of their network, but for right now, their goal is to, to get on the air. And the quickest way to do that is co-locating. And, and we also feel that it's the most pleasing for most municipalities instead of building a tower next door.
I, I only speak for myself, but I agree with you wholeheartedly. Wholeheartedly. All right, Mr. Quinn, um, look forward to getting that, uh. On my last set of questions deal with, um, I'm trying to figure out which resolution it is, um. One of the resolutions, oh, here we go. B1 for Sprint Spectrum. Um, actually calls for on the third page of the, uh, resolution. It states that the applicant shall plant six mature shade trees in a location to be selected by the borough planner. Um, I was out there today. I'm sure the board members are smiling in fact, going to bring enough trees. But there isn't a single tree on the entire property. Uh, we all know that regardless of what this says applicant, the property owner who's ultimately responsible. Um, I would greatly like to find out, uh, when the owner's going to plant these six trees.
You can coordinate with the borough planner on that regard. Again, I, I can't tell you that was. Done on site, if it was maybe, uh, comes somewhere else or whatever, what was done in this property. So we can certainly coordinate that with the board planner.
All right, I understand that. Um, and you see that I trust too on Sprint Spectrum's, uh, uh, third page of the resolution. Uh, that would be greatly appreciated if you could work with the, the board planner to, uh. Pre-selection and place them on site. And, um, I, I, I. I, I'm just going to make this comment to, to Victor, you know, if they can't put all six on site, you know, I mean, if. You go on North Avenue, Vic, there isn't a single, and I mean this, there isn't a single tree on North Avenue from Center Street. All the way down to, um. Uh, Cranford. So that would be greatly appreciated. Um, I assume also, Mr. Quinn, in looking at the previous resolutions, it's the same kind of conditions on each one. I trust, uh, your client would be willing to accept all those conditions?
Yes, uh, it, it looks to me though, and, and just even from my own driving by the property, it looks like it's not as in. Uh, it looks like at some point in time, there was, it was a little bit worse condition, but I think it's a better condition now, but the, I think that's why we're only requesting to. Clean up around the trash around the area, which will make sure.
I, I agree with you. I agree with you. Mr. Chairman, uh, that's it. Mr. Lingard answered the biggest question that we. Mr. Chairman, uh, that's it. Mr. Lindgard answered the biggest question that we can get that from them. And I know, um, Mr. Quinn, you asked about, you know, those being the conditions of the resolution. And that's fine, but I certainly hope, Mr. Fraser, Mr. Venegra, that that resolution gets written, that they submit that information prior to the issuance of any permits that are necessary to install antennas on top of the tower.
Yeah, I mean, listen, Bill, we're going to be doing the resolution at the uh, the next meeting anyway, so that uh, that information can be, I would think, submitted in advance of the memorialization.
Sounds great.
Are you sure that's it?
I, I don't want Mr. Quinn more upset with me than he is already, you know? Yeah, that's it. That's it. I thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Bill.
Don, I've got a question. Is, is the proper applicant the leasie in this application or should it be the lessor?
Well, it's the, it's the lessie, but in, I, I looked at this earlier when uh, Mr. Quinn was speaking. Uh, there is in the package the consent by the property owner to the applicant.
So in the future, we could possibly be seeing additional future applications by leases to keep going.
That is absolute, that is absolutely correct.
And that's an excellent, that's an excellent note. Anyone else? Anyone else have any questions?
Actually, I have a question, uh, Mr. Quinn. Mr. Quinn, we, we have a, um, a court reporter transcribing this, correct?
Yes.
Uh, I will request of you, because I will have to write this resolution, that that transcript be emailed to my office, you know, at least a week before the next meeting.
Sure, can we take care of that?
Thanks.
Perfect, thank you.
I have one point.
Yes, Steve.
I'm just looking at Victor's report, um, F one, the previous resolution states that previous additions to the tower put the tower, quote, near full capacity. And it would be non-feasible or unsafe for there to be a subsequent extension of the tower without modification. So, has that been dealt with?
Uh, again, that's, the testimony that was given was that, that was from over ten years ago where the things come on, things come off the antennas, and all we have, codes get updated. So I, what we have is we've submitted a report that states that with the current configuration, the tower is capable structurally of handling this load at ninety-seven point seven percent. Um, based on all the codes now and what's there on the tower.
Victor, that seems right. Do you, okay?
Yes, because I have signed off in the past on numerous um, antennae being removed from the tower and replaced with smaller antennae. So over the years, the antennae have gotten much smaller.
Okay, all right.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I'll close that portion of the meeting. Moderator, if you would open it up for um, just general comment or comments of this, or questions of this witness uh, to the general public?
If there's any questions, please raise your hand. There are no hands raised.
Okay, I'm going to ask another question. You might as well just keep it open. Um, any questions, any general comments uh, from the public at this time?
In terms of general comments, that means includes statements in favor of or opposed to the application.
Thank you, Donald.
There are no raised hands.
Okay, thank you. At that, and then we will close that portion of the meeting and um, and we'll now have a vote.
Well, first of all, uh, Mr. Quinn, you have no further witnesses, is that correct?
No, that's the extent of our witnesses in our presentation.
And, Mr. Quinn, do I assume that you submit, you don't need to do a summation?
Uh, no, I mean, I think it's pretty, I, I mean, it's pretty straightforward. We're utilizing the existing tower. Federal laws are, are in place and, and uh, in addition, I think the applicant is willing to go to great lengths to work with the borough to, to be reasonable to address your concerns too. So I think with the conditions that were being discussed, I think this board should feel a little comfortable, uh, you know, despite even uh, to go beyond the federal regulations to grant approval and press that to be granted.
Okay, Steve.
Okay, so at this time, um, do I hear a motion to include um, the uh, specific resolutions that are um, predicated on the approval of this uh, of this application, if it should go so forth? And um, do I hear a second?
What are the conditions?
Don, you, you have them listed?
How, how bad, how bad if we do this? Um, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll, I'll take what Kathy's saying. I'll say, um, I'll make a motion to uh, grant the use variance uh, for this uh, application to allow a maximum antenna height of one hundred and twenty-eight feet. Um, subject to the conditions as have been itemized in the previous resolutions for previous applicants on this property and specifically uh, requiring as, I'm sure you know I would, um, that the applicant discussed with the uh, borough planner, the installation, the planting of, of six shade trees on, on the property.
And Bill, how about that other um, uh, report?
Thank you. The one, the one that was, was so important, I forgot to mention it. Yes, and that the applicant submit uh, the um, letter from uh, the uh, cell tower owner, I think it's Crown Castle, regarding the um, or advising of the, each of the carriers and each of the height of their antennas on the tower.
I'll second that.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. And compliance with the, any conditions and recommendations in the Harbor Consultants' Review Letter of February seventeen, twenty twenty-two, right, Bill?
You got, couldn't have said it better, Don.
Then I'll second that.
Okay, roll call, Adele.
Ken Capobianco.
Yes.
Chair Green.
Yes.
Kathy Vilagio.
Yes.
William Nearstead.
Yes.
Paul Tarantino.
Yes.
Stephen Uplatano.
Yes.
And Mike Vena.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, very good.
Great, thank you very much for your time tonight, everyone, and thank you for uh, bearing with us and hearing us this late hour.
Mr. Quinn, you have my email address?
Yes, I, I sent you an email, I think, last week. I hope you got it.
Yes, 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 yeah, yes, you did. Yes, you did. Yeah, so you just, if you get me that uh, that transcript, we'll have the resolution in the next meeting.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I hear.
Have a great night.
Tulsa and good night, uh.
Night, yeah.
Washington.
At this time, we have three bills, at this time, we have three bills and claims that have to be approved or are up for approval. Um, two from Harbor Consultants in escrow for South Avenue Phase Two, one for one thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars fifty cents. The second one for three thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars. And then we have one additional one for an escrow for Winslow, um, and that's for a hundred and fifty dollars. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, hearing none, motion carries. We've already, we've already, for the record, opened it up to the general public for general comments. So that portion of the meeting has been closed. Um, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. Uh, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Safe trip tomorrow, Steve.
All right, see everybody soon.